Thank you, Andrew. Good evening and welcome to the June 9th, 2025 session of the Norfolk Select Board. We are going to begin this meeting, we're going to go right into executive session. At the end of executive session, we'll immediately go into regular session. We will be entering into executive session to consider three separate matters, and we will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. I request a motion that the board vote to convene an executive session pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss a strategy with respect to litigation entitled Wall Street Development Corp. versus Norfolk Planning Board at Al, Norfolk Superior Court, Civil Action Number 1882 CV01140. And I request a motion that the board vote to convene an executive session pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with regard to potential litigation in so far as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, 115 Park Street. And I finally request a motion that the board vote to convene an executive session pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A7, to approve executive session minutes.
I'll make the motion. Do you want to do executive session under those conditions?
Is that good?
Yeah.
We have to do a roll call vote. Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
Kevin Roach, aye.
Taeys Higman, aye.
Excellent. So we are going into executive session. Thank you, and welcome back to the regular session of our June 7th Norfolk Select Board meeting. I'm joined by my colleagues, Taeys Higman and Kevin Roach, and would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And at this time, we are opening it up for public comment. Citizens are welcome to express their views during public comment for up to three minutes on any issue that affects the town. We are, it's not a dialogue for public comment, but we listen, we always listen to what our community has to say, and we will give any remarks appropriate consideration. So is there anybody online or in person who has public commented for this time? No public comment. All right, so moving on to number two. Justin?
Right, number two. I'm going to toss this to Kelly, our Assistant Town Administrator, but I just want to quickly thank her as well as Judith Lizardi in our office. In your, in the board's packet, you have a spreadsheet that outlines various fees for various communities, but I'll toss it to Kelly. I just wanted to note that it was a collaborative approach, and I appreciate their work on this, of course.
Yep, so Judith had put all of this together last year, and so I came in, I take, I took a look to confirm that none of the numbers had changed between last year and this year. And so what I did was I took the information, kind of averaged out the rates for every town, gave a recommendation based on those rates for you to all review. So we wanted to give this to you tonight to take a look at, and you know, the next meeting or in a couple of meetings from now, maybe you guys can come back and give us your decision on what you guys want to do.
And just so, the history for people watching, we noticed quite a discrepancy between the fees that we were charging in Norfolk and some other communities, and so we wanted to take a look at that and make sure that we weren't in the tight budget situation, that we weren't having any missed opportunities. Go ahead.
And one thing, another thing that I would add is that we've looked at it holistically. You know, the previous year, we did some other department fees and we raised some of them. We said this next year, we would look at select for fees, so this is in line with what we said we were to do previously. I actually think these were probably going to be the recommendations I would give the board anyway, but the reason why, we wanted to give it to you now, but give you some time to reflect on it. If you have any questions for us, you can ping us back, but also give the community, you know, some of these people who do pay these fees, opportunity to digest these a little bit too. But generally speaking, if you see the data, Norfolk has generally been below what the average has been for surrounding communities.
So a question I had, it is generally below the surrounding communities. I noticed that our taxi fees were quite high compared to our communities. Do we know a history behind that, or?
So that would probably be something else we're going to talk about. We have an antiquated taxi hackney policy. That is something that I'm looking at. Probably your next town administrator is probably going to give a recommendation. I have an edited version for them to consider. It's because it's an antiquated policy, to be honest with you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right. So that one is the one that jumped up. Did you have any questions?
I think it would be helpful to see the percent increase.
Yep.
Just so that people can.
We can add that to the spreadsheet, so you can see generally what the percentage increases.
Excellent. Two of you have questions?
Nope.
So we'll put this on the, for people watching, if you go onto the website and you click on Agenda, you can see the same packet materials that we have available here in our binders, thanks to the amazing Amanda, and, but it's available to you to see online, and so please feel free to take a look and give us any feedback that you have, but we'll consider this at our next agenda. Thank you. Thank you for your work, Kelly, on that. And would you give Judith our thanks as well? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, Justin.
This is another, we've had a lot of surge contracts this year. This is regarding water and sewer treatment chemicals. Just for the board's knowledge, you know, this is part of a collective that is done for all the municipalities that are part of the Southeastern Regional Services Group, so it's a collective, and this is for the water and sewer treatment chemicals.
Cool. Does anybody have any questions? It's pretty routine. I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the, what's the name of the contract?
Award the surge contracts for water and sewer treatment chemicals.
I'm trying to get the right page here. I make a motion to award the storage contracts for wastewater treatment chemicals.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Number four, Justin.
The next item is, sort of, the town, at town meeting, and the board knows they've had multiple iterations of Avery Way on their agenda. This is the final step to make sure the street that was approved at town meeting becomes a public way. So this is the As-Built Acceptance Plan that will be filed with the Registry of Deeds, so just need the final approval of that plan.
Excellent. Any questions? Questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I have a, make a motion to approve Avery Way As-Built Acceptance Plan.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And just to add on here for folks, we do have a number of people who are, I know, are waiting for us to have a kind of a response to some of our other unaccepted roads, and we are working on that, and it's not a forgotten area. We are, we are working toward some resolution there. So it's not forgotten, it's still in the, in the hopper, so thank you. Number five, Justin.
This is for the board to discuss, you know, as you, every year, as you consider your reorganization, you have to consider liaison assignments. Amanda has included in the board's packet what the liaison assignments were previously, and for you guys to discuss how you would like to reappropriate them.
So I guess we have a couple options. We could just have you take over gyms, but one, one of the things we've done in the past is we've just sort of rotated through, and you pick one, I'll pick one, and that seems to be a good way to, to do this. So you're new, so do you want to choose first?
Sure, I will take Norfolk Public School Committee.
Okay. Go ahead, Kevin.
I'll take planning board.
I'm going to keep the zoning board of appeals.
I'll take library trustees.
Kevin?
Tri County School.
Where are we going for Kevin? I met this lovely woman on the Historical Commission, and I haven't gone yet to their meeting, so I better keep Historical Commission, so I can keep my promise to her.
I'll do King Philip School Committee.
Kevin?
Port of Health.
I'm going to try CPC.
Master Plan Steering Committee. Oh, sorry, is it Kevin's?
No, it's you.
Oh, Master Plan.
I didn't see that one. Thank you for doing that one.
Oh, is that, is still an active committee? No, I think that one went dormant because we did that, right?
Yeah, Rich.
I would like to bring it back.
Yes, amen. Sorry.
I think it'll be a Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Implementation Committee.
Implementation Committee.
Okay.
Love that.
Exactly, that's exactly where we need to be.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. So are we at Kevin? I lost my place. Yes, Kevin.
I'll take the Recreation Committee.
Recreation is Kevin. I will take Advisory.
Did someone take Conservation Commission already?
Nope, I did CPC, but not Conservation.
Take Conservation.
I will, let's see where we're at here. Is there still a Fire Station Building Committee? I would say not.
It's winding down.
I'll take Council on Aging.
Anyone do ZBA yet?
Yes. So that's PIP projects, I think. I see left are PIP projects and PIP projects.
And Energy Committee.
Energy Committee.
Oh, I didn't see Energy here. Which one?
I'll take the Energy Committee, yeah.
And that leaves PIP with me.
What is PIP? I'm sorry.
It's, right now, it's mostly Southwood. It's a group, mostly with Southwood.
Public Improvement Projects.
Public Improvement Plans, but most of the work has been about the Southwood project.
Did you get everything on there? Who got King Philip?
Taeys. And Fire Station, we didn't assign anybody because that's waning.
Kevin can close it out.
Kevin can close it out.
They probably have two more meetings at most, probably.
All right. Kevin, you can close it out. Awesome. So do we need to vote on that, or can we just, that's a?
Boards in the past typically voted on it. It's not really necessary, it's however you guys want to approach it. You've made a decision, so.
Do we just vote to approve what we just decided, something broad?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the Select Board Liaison Assignments as described.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Number six.
Six is consider approval of the SAFE Coalition placing purple flags on Town Hill August 28th until September 2nd. It's part of International Overdose Awareness Day. We have some representatives from SAFE Coalition here. I don't think it's necessary, there's no public safety concerns. It's similar to field of flags, but you know, you have them here. I think they're for the next agenda item mostly, but they're here, so, but there's no concerns. We've done this before, it's good.
Awesome. Are there any questions?
How many flags will they be putting up?
I don't know.
A lot.
1,853.
1,853.
Okay. How far is the space? Because I know field of flags, we put a thousand flags. So you're putting up 1,800 flags, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's the least amount of flags we've ever put up there, by like 400.
Okay.
So yeah, it's the same exact space, it's just a little bit longer.
It's good that it's dropping, though, yes. It's good that it's dropping, because they represent people.
But we use the, one of your friends ways of putting in all the flags, so we have kind of a strategy of putting them in now.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, we, you can see it from the road, so it's similar to how you put the flags. I'm sorry, sorry.
Yes, so it's the, so the flags are similar to where you put the American flags, and we kind of have it in a strategic way, where we'll have all of those flags, and then we'll also have two signs, so that facing the road, folks know what the flags are for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll take a motion if we have no questions. Questions?
Motion to approve the allocation of the opioid abatement flags on Town Hill. Oh, no, sorry, sorry. SAFE Coalition placing purple flags on Town Hill August 28th until September 2nd as part of International Overdose Awareness Day.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that. Thank you so much. Number seven, Justin.
All right. At May Town Meeting, the board and town meeting allocated additional $20,000 in opioid abatement funds. We had at our last, at the board's meeting previously where they allocated additional funds, there was a lot of demand still. We couldn't allocate as many funds, so we made a decision to allocate another $20,000 to utilize now, buy time until Fall Town Meeting when we generally do that. So we let our sort of colleagues and community know. In the board's packet, you have applications from the SAFE Coalition. They outline what their requests are. They request $20,000, but they break it down into several sort of different categories there. You have an application from Gillie's House that requests $20,000. That's largely geared towards repairs of a septic system. The total cost of that is $40,000, but they're requesting $20,000. And then we got another request for MPS to support the social worker position as well. So we got more requests than we have again, but we have $20,000. You have a representative from SAFE, you might want to hear from them a little bit.
Absolutely.
And then the board can decide if they want to allocate those funds now, take some time to consider, whatever you guys decide is what you will end up doing.
Awesome. So to start, why don't I welcome you up? Come on up and. Yes, so come up in a comfy chair.
Oh, fabulous, okay. Hi, Steph, you can come. This is Dr. Stephanie Heath. She is one of the social workers at SAFE. So hi, everybody. My name is Jen Levine. I am the co-founder and CEO of the SAFE Coalition, and we are really thankful that the town of Norfolk is allowing this other $20,000 to be placed back into the community. We have received funding from you in the past, and what we've really been able to do with that funding is meet with residents through Narcan Training Monthly. And what we've heard from Norfolk residents specifically, and really what the data shows us, is that there is a direct need for true mental health and substance use resources within the town of Norfolk. Between 2023 and 2024, Norfolk saw over 150% increase in overdoses. So you went from 13 in 2023 to 31 in 2024. Forty-one folks received Narcan, 0% had access to resources that were within 20 miles. So what we know is that we have the ability, the education, the staff, to really provide a level of support to residents here in Norfolk. And for those who may not know, the opioid abatement funds are broken out into municipalities, and really the funding is crucial to residents of that municipality to get those specific resources and support. So what we have provided here and outlined to each of you is a request for funds to provide a mental health clinician, which would be Dr. Stephanie Heath, to provide resources, mental health and substance use, for folks here at no cost. So the SAFE Coalition is a no-private-pay, no-insurance-based organization. So really, this is something that we've been doing in many other communities, where we provide free, local, accessible access to individuals in the community at no cost. We can provide clinical care, which would include a diagnosis and true support, or we could provide any kind of referral. So if an individual comes and they need a higher level of care, we can do that. If they need a different level of care, we can do that. We've also placed funding in for transportation. So access to treatment is a huge challenge in this area. So the train is fabulous, however, the cost of the train has increased, and the places are limited in where you can go for care. There are also not a ton of mass health providers in this area that are accepting clients. So transportation, either to our services or to additional clinical care, would be great. And then a mental health awareness campaign. We work really closely with Healthy KP and with the social worker who also put in a referral or request for funds, and quite frankly, those that we work with who struggle from substance use have a mental health concern, whether it's diagnosed or not. And so for us, it's really important to bring down that higher and increasing number of overdose-related EMS calls through a mental health campaign that we know has worked in other communities. So we are happy to answer any questions about what we put in, kind of what we know about the community. If you have any questions for Steph, we're happy to answer any of them.
Yes, I have a question, just in terms of how do patients access your services? So is it, is there a crisis line? Are you connected based on like a 911 call? How do residents in town actually connect with you when they're having a mental health or substance use crisis?
So right now, our office is in Norfolk, and we don't offer specific services for Norfolk right now because we don't have a contract for that. If you were to call SAFE right now, we would say hello, we'd make an appointment with you, but if we ever were on a waitlist, you'd have to go on the waitlist. This would allow an opportunity for a clinician to be here in the town and not have a waitlist at all because they're set office hours. So we do see about 500 folks throughout the year. We see about 8,000 community members just in general events that we do, but we are, we are open for business, and we do often have a wait, which is kind of what we want to get away from here with this opportunity.
Okay, excellent. And outside of like crisis management, are there other services that you provide?
Yeah, we actually don't do any crisis management.
Okay.
So we provide layers of clinical and peer support. So we have an entire Division for Diversion, which we work directly with the KP schools and 55 other communities with, where in lieu of a suspension, students come to us, attend for three days, and then go back to school on the fourth day. The suspension is absolved from their record. We have an entire family division, so those are family members who are impacted by a loved one's struggles. So we have a group for parents, we have a group for grandparents, we have a group for siblings, a host of other programs for family members, and then we have a Division for Collaborative Care, and that's the relationships that we have with our municipalities, fire and police departments, DCF, DPH, any of our outwardly facing programs and partnerships that we have. And so should someone call in a crisis, we do have clinical relationships with Wayside, Riverside Community Care, and SMOC, and both SMOC and Wayside hold office hours within our office, so if we need to do that internal referral, we can do that as well.
Okay. So you mentioned that there were 31 cases of patients who needed Narcan?
Oh, no, 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 those are, those are 31 EMS calls in Norfolk.
Okay, and what, so what do the demographics look like of those people that have, that are reported in that number?
Sure, so I think 88 were Caucasian, and I could look up the rest, but I could also send you the link, it's very public.
I mean, just in terms of like age group?
Age, that's what I'm saying.
Oh.
Adults? I'm just thinking about, is it school age?
So I haven't looked up the actual age in Norfolk specifically, but countywide, between 45 and 65, all of 2024 were the average ages. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, I think oftentimes we talk generally about, you know, the communities that we support or the counties that we work within, but then when we break it down by town, every town is so different, and I think that's kind of the intent of the abatement funds, is to utilize the funds in the specific communities to meet the needs of that specific community. You know, in Norfolk, it, what we could provide here is different than another community because we might have language barriers or transportation barriers, or there may be more grandparents than, and so we just want to make sure that what we're offering is what we're hearing is a need, what we're seeing with the data is a need, and what all of our partners in Norfolk and in the KP school system have said is a need as well.
And in terms of the services that you offer, are, we do have our sister communities in Rentham and Plainville, and so are the things you're able to offer in Norfolk comparable to Rentham and Plainville, or?
So we have, or on, or ending our second year of doing a program very similar to this in Rentham, where we have a clinician, which is Steph. We provide Narcan trainings. We work with families pretty directly, so this contract would be similar to what we have in Rentham. Plainville has a very different structure for their expenditure of abatement funds, and so currently, we're not doing anything in Plainville with those abatement funds. However, we have partnered with Healthy KP to provide a direct resource for families and children in Plainville, which is still an offering, just is a different way of funding.
Excellent. Do you have any questions? No questions, any other questions?
I think so.
So I want to thank you so much for the work that you're doing, and we really value your work. I think the board will have to take time to consider because we have more, more interest than we have funds, which is, I suppose, a good problem to have, but I'm really grateful for the work, and, and thank you for taking the time this evening. Time is, is precious, I know, and so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to see you again.
Is there anybody here from Gillie House?
No, David isn't here.
No, Gillie House, and nobody here from the schools. So I think I'd like to move the discussion, depending on the mood of the board, to move the discussion of these funds to our next meeting, is that all right?
Definitely, yes.
Give time to think, because we're, we have applications here for close to 60, and we have 20, and so. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. And so let's move that conversation to our next meeting, and we'll start splitting hairs at that time. And it also gives Gillie House an opportunity to show up and stop Pearl if she wants to come.
We'll send them a reminder, just.
Thank you. All righty, and going on to number eight.
Eight. We have a couple of contracts to award. Just so the board is aware, these contracts and these bids, the bids process were viewed by town council, they're integral in sort of awarding these bids. One is to consider the awarding of a contract to R Kadesh Excavation for Water Drainage, Roadwork, and General Site Work. This is for emergency and non-emergency construction services. Two bids were received. In the board's packet, there's a memo from Blair that outlines that process. And like I said, this is, was reviewed with town council, and they determined this was the, the best route to move forward.
Excellent. Do you have any questions, Kevin?
No.
Questions? I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the bid and award the contract to R Kadesh Excavation for Water Drainage, Roadwork, and General Site Work.
I second the motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is another similar contract, except for this one, there was only one bid, and this is regarding awarding a contract to Whitewater for operation, maintenance, and management services of the wastewater treatment facility, and as I mentioned, they were the only bidder.
Excellent. Any questions?
Yes, one question, so, is there a player here?
Blair is here.
Is this average based on your experience for this type of work?
Yes.
Since we only had one bid, I just want to make sure it's a competitive.
Claire Crane, Director of Public Works. So it was what I would consider to be about a percentage point and a half above what it was existing, which is well within the norm for this type of three-year contract.
Okay.
Although we were just pleased it went up, in consideration of a lot of our other contracts, it only went up a very small amount in comparison.
It was nominal overall.
Yeah.
And they've, they've been the only one that's bid the last few times.
Yes.
Because for the small wastewater treatment plant we have, so.
Yeah, okay.
Very little interest.
Yeah. Yeah, that does, that is a pretty big factor.
Yeah.
It is so tiny.
Thank you. Thank you, Blair. All right, I would entertain a motion.
You did such a great job.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept the bid and award a contract to Whitewater for Operation, Maintenance, and Management Services of Wastewater Treatment Facilities.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. And that brings us to Sue.
And Rich.
And Rich, Sue and Rich.
So just quickly, as they're coming up here, I just want to commend Sue and Rich. You know, they've done a great job in regards to, you know, highlighting what our housing inventory looks like. I know there was questions at town meeting, et cetera, about, you know, some of these projects, what impact it has on Safe Harbor. They've been, you know, so collaborative and good team, I thought it'd be good to have another meeting. another meeting. They provided a memo and some backup information that's in the packet as well for you to see, but I thought it would be best to hear from them directly, just so you guys can ask any questions you have as well.
We are a good team, aren't we, Rich?
Yes.
An amazing team.
I guess, did you want to, does it make sense? I'll throw it to the board. Do you want to put up the slides from what I, we put together?
I think putting the slides up would be nice. I really thought they were really well-done when you did them, so.
Helpful.
Yeah. She didn't say I, she said we. I draft, well.
Yeah, you drafted them.
Drafted them.
Sorry, give me one second.
Just get those slides up.
There we go.
Don't let good work go to waste. Seal them. Sorry. There we go. Okay.
Sure.
It's in the board's packet. It's online as well, too, if, you know, anyone wants to dive into any further. So I think that's good. Let's do it.
So this is, this is a pretty good slide for a lot of reasons, particularly as we kind of talk about it. This topic in general is if you look at 177 units on the top, in terms of what we're on the SHI, and, so, the bottom of the asterisk has the?
It includes the affordable homes in Lakeland Farms, the Village at Norfolk, and the Enclave.
Okay. So if you think about, and Sue, as you, we'll talk about, talk about in general. So as we work as a team effort, Sue works in terms of getting the affordable units onto the SHI. She puts all the, you know, reporting to the state, the COs, the documentation, so forth, and then I kind of work in the back in terms of the numbers. Which is kind of interesting is that those three projects took much longer from permitting to occupancy. So that's really important as we kind of talk about as we go on, when we get into further slides. And really why it's important is because we'll, Safe Harbor, we want to, there are some terms we kind of want to be specific about because there are specific terms and they do mean things, which is a temporary piece of this puzzle, in terms of we talk about subsidized housing inventory. But you can see, we, we're at 4.2%, so we're well below 10% as of right now. And we don't have that many permits in 2025. Thus far, it's three building permits.
Residential.
Residential building permits.
But on that point, if I could just interject for one second, I think what's important to note is that while we may have only three new home building permits issued this year, we have in the pipeline, you know, Waits Crossing has 66 units of housing, 16 affordable units. Lakeland Hills has 44 units of housing. I think I've sold two affordables in there, so I still have nine to go. If I had to guess, there's probably been a handful of homes sold. So those are still in the works. They're in the pipeline, if you will. And as we know, we have eligibility letters for three significantly large projects that could, could start at any time. So I think that's important to keep in mind, that even though our numbers are down for a single-family home permits, there's a lot in the, from former years in the pipeline still, and to, you know, what Rich said regarding those, those numbers all count at different times. So I just think that's important to keep in mind.
And the biggest takeaway from hopefully tonight is we talk about, is as we talked about before, it's a moving target. So on this topic, you're really never done, right? So everything's changing, evolving, permanence, and so forth. So I think that's important as we go through the discussion. Did you want to go to the next slide? I see, kind of covered it, but I think that gives you a snapshot of as we build towards 2030, the amount of permits that are, that are being pulled up to this point.
So that's a huge drop in permits from '24 to '25. I know you just mentioned there's a lot in the pipeline, so is that because of the single-family permits that were pulled or being pulled, or does this include, you know?
This includes the 40B projects. So I think, you know, in 2023, 33 building permits were pulled for a build, probably for Avery Way was probably, no, they were probably part of 2022. But each, each 40B project, you know, they, they pull several at a time. So that we, and for 2025, since January of 2025, while we have three developments with eligibility letters, nobody's come in to pull their permits yet. They're still finalizing some of the, the issues that they have to resolve. For example, when the Everett Street folks come to pull their permit for, whether it's 200 units for an apartment or 160 units for an apartment, that's going to be a big, a big pull for the, for the town.
Yeah, to Sue's point on 2024, like Lakeland Hills, they've pulled all their building permits.
At once.
Yeah, so those, so they're, they're pulled, but they just haven't constructed them yet, so.
Right, and it may be, my guesstimate on Lakeland Hills, while they pulled them in 2024, you're probably not going to see that build out complete until 2027.
Okay.
Have they started building there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
They probably have, I have one single-family affordable that has been done in two townhouses. But if I had to guess, they probably have seven single families sold. Only my buyers are in the townhomes yet. The, the other units aren't complete.
Yeah.
So you're, you are not concerned with the number of permits that are pulled right now, based on what we have in the pipeline?
We potentially could be drowning in permits very quickly.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we're, we're going to be, we're going to have a big, a big, you agree, Rich?
Yeah, it depends, depends how you characterize what you mean, right? So I think there's stuff, there's stuff on the horizon, so it may seem like there's not much going on. So it's kind of like word of caution.
What I would chime in, I'll give you an example a little bit, and how to look at this, like in terms of a finance aspect of it, where I look at.
Yeah, that's where I'm.
When you're looking at revenue, right?
My brain is going as far as bringing in revenue.
Because that's where I think a bit of it is, where are you going to? Is if I look at like '22 to '23, and I'm looking at fiscal year, so I'm looking at July to like June. In '22, from July to June, it was 34 permits that were pulled in that time period, right? Where we're at now, we're at 22 permits. But you also have to account for what they're implying there, too. We may have quite a few permits pulled that are pretty substantial based on some projects that are, you know, on the horizon for the town. So in terms of our end, yeah, we're, we look at those permits, we see that we're lower than the previous fiscal year, so we look at that financially what impact, but then we also have to plan, hey, you've got some big projects that are coming along, so you've got a factor like that. I assume that's where you were going.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're going to be bringing in the revenue that we've seen in prior years for permits, so that's all.
Yeah, but like anything, these, you know, the timing plays a part in the finance aspect and the, you know, market absorption of it, too, but yeah. Want to go to the next slide? And this, again, this, it's good for more for the general public, be having your slides. So, you know, Norfolk Station is, they still haven't done anything yet, so that's, that's been on the books for a while yet. And they may, you know, which is kind of the next topic on the discussion, is about town center zoning. They, they are thinking about maybe they might go through a town center zoning development project, which would be a mix of commercial and residential. So that's why that one has been approved for a while, but they've just continued the permit. They haven't actually, that's one of the factors, obviously, one factor, why they haven't started to move forward on that particular project. As we talked about the rest of them, Lakeland Hills, and then Waits Crossing is really starting to gear up now.
Right.
You know, they have, I think they had a sale last week, so that's, that's moving forward.
And I think they only have two open building permits at this time.
Yeah, they only have two.
They only have two, so, you know, that, that's a development that will have 48 units in it. Well, no, it's 66, right? Total 64.
64.
64.
Yep.
So they'll have 60, there are 64 units that have already been approved to go in there, but they've only pulled two building permits. So we, you know, and that's an active, they're building, my lottery's opening. So, you know, two months from now, they could be in saying, we want eight permits, we want 12 permits.
Yep.
The next slide? This is the slide.
It's a tricky one.
This is the slide. Of all slides, so it, again, these are projections based on what Sue kind of alluded to earlier, between Pondville Crossing, which is that the larger 40B development, which is 200 units of rental, which they're still seriously looking at, you know, converting that project to an MBTA multifamily project, which then would scale that down to 140. But, so we've, you know, shown some projections either way, how that would play out. Pondville Station, the developer, he is moving forward with a, he's brought onboard a new engineer, so he anticipates to be before the board probably when, towards the end of the summer. So we're, we're getting close. So that one is, I would say imminent. They already have the project eligibility letter and they are coming forward, and there is no, well, it might do this versus that. That's, that project's moving forward in that direction. Cranberry Heights is, is out on the, in the Franklin, excuse me, not Franklin, well, sort of Franklin, but more of the Rentham line. They have that project eligibility. That's a single-family ownership project. They haven't, it's still out there. They haven't moved forward on it yet, but we do have to account for it. So we've kind of played the shuffle a little bit in terms of where numbers might be. But when I said, talked about, as Sue always reminds me, you know, things come on, they come off, things come on, they come off. So to get to 10%, it's, it's a loft, it's, it's a goal, right? You try to achieve it, but for the general public, as you.
It's a moving target, correct.
It's a moving target, and then, so you're not, oh, take a break, we're done, right? That's not the way this act works, and I think that's probably, you know, if you don't do this all the time, it's kind of a little bit harder for people to grasp, so. And that's where the occupancy comes in. So these things might be permitted, ready to go, and then they don't get their occupancy permits, so we, we slide off, so we slide down. It's probably good to talk about Safe Harbor right now, right?
Right, right.
It's a fair point. So Safe Harbor's temporary. It's a year, if it's a half percent, which in our case is 18 units now with the new census. And then two years is if it's 36 units, so you just double it. So there is a scenario, if you look at this table, where, you know, Cranberry Heights could come in tomorrow and they might come in and get permitted and we haven't even got it. We don't have 18 units, so we're not even able.
So you can't count them until that.
Yeah, you can't count them. You're there, but you have some numbers, but we don't get into Safe Harbor. And similar will happen the last time. We had three projects where we were in Safe Harbor, and the timing worked out where we're at 23 months, Safe Harbor?
Correct, correct. So Safe Harbor starts from the date that the first project is stamped in the town clerk's office. So while we were very excited back then because we thought our first project came in, let's say in July, and our second project came in in December, so we thought, oh, we're going to have two years from December. It's two years from July. So it's really not a full two years from the date that that first project is started. And one of the things that I think we, we wanted the public to understand at town meeting when, when the article came forward about rezoning the MBTA Housing Community Act to include this potential development, was that, you know, initially, I think folks think, oh, great, 200 apartments are, are affordable, housing 10% is solved for good.
Yeah.
And it isn't. And it, and it potentially, you know, a project that large, we've never seen here in town, we don't really even have an idea of what the length will be to complete that project. You know, we, we've seen 40Bs in town with, you know, 40 units, 32 units, and we've seen those projects take between three and four years, but we don't know how, you know, how long that project will take, what's going to fall off, what's not going to be occupied. So we just wanted to make it clear to the townsfolk that this is not the end of the 10% subsidized housing inventory issue.
Can you explain to me the fall off?
Sure.
Like, because my limited understanding is if, if an apartment or a home is sold as affordable, then it remains affordable.
It does. So what happens, Anita, is I'll use Avery Way. Avery Way was 40 units, 10 affordable. So they're permitted, let's say, at the town clerk's office on July 1. So automatically, 10 affordable units get placed on our subsidized housing inventory because it's been permitted with the town clerk. After one year, if I don't have 10 occupancy permits for those 10 affordable units, they fall off of our subsidized housing inventory and they don't go back on until we do have occupancy.
So do you have a waiting list, a healthy waiting list of folks, or?
Yes, but it's more, it's not that we can't get people into them, it's that they're not built.
Oh, I understand.
It's not constructed. There's no project that, that large that's going to be constructed that quickly. So it's not that we're waiting for applicants. We've been very fortunate. We always have applicants, but it's that the units aren't built. And then the state's preference is, once a year, they'll send you notification, hey, we're, we're updating everybody's subsidized housing inventory, send us everything you've got. So we don't piecemeal them and send them one at a time.
Right.
We do it once a year. And so this year, I added the Enclave, Avery Way, I added Lakeland Farms, and we added the Village, because those three projects, which is 18, you know, somewhere around 32, 24 units, all fell off of our subsidized housing inventory for a couple of years, if not a little longer, and then just got put back on.
Because it took so long for the project to be completed.
And, and people to be in the units.
Thank you.
Sure.
That seems.
Yes.
I mean, I, okay, I just want to make sure, it doesn't seem reasonable to think that a project would be completed that quickly for them to basically assess whether or not you're meeting that threshold in such, a short turnaround seems odd to me, but.
Well, that's.
I don't know if there are things happening at the state to change that.
Well.
Because otherwise, I mean, developers are just going to continue to build and build and build because, and take their time.
That's a, it's a great point you're making.
And we're never going to meet the 10%. I don't see how any town.
No. Well, there's, I mean, so we have some time. I would read, what's the report that was issued? I'll send you the link, but there's a report that was done about housing.
Yeah.
And some recommendations, and I would suggest to you that it could get worse, actually, in terms of, depends whose lens you look at, but.
Yeah.
They were talking about, one discussion was that they would not, they would eliminate the provision whereby towns could, could count market rate rental units with affordable. So right now, you get both, even though you only have 20% affordable, that they were only going to count affordable of, of a affordable project, which, again, that would drive the number up.
Yeah.
So you would need more. The other thing they were talking about is, right now, the denominator stays constant for 10 years. They were talking about adjusting it to make it a real-time denominator, so you, as we... They were talking about adjusting it to make it a real-time denominator. So you, as we, we do our own internal accounting on these numbers, they were going to make, there's possibility they would shift towards real-time, so you could, so so far, I haven't seen, to your point, it doesn't seem, it could, the last, it could be worse in some ways, frankly. But I don't, but that's just, it's a future forecast. But to your point, it's not fast, it's too short a time for these projects.
Right, right. The other thing I think is important to say is that, you know, they're really looking for, certainly, the ten percent is pushed. But they're really looking for communities that are actively working on getting to ten percent. I don't believe that the expectation is that they're going to get every community, I mean, we still have some communities that have zero percent of affordable housing in them. I think what's important is to continue to have an active trust, to continue to have an active housing production plan, and for them to understand that we are, Norfolk is a town that is continuously working on moving this forward. There, you know, we're not getting letters that say, if you don't do this, you must do this. We are in complete compliance with what the state looks for us to do. And, well, it could become much trickier to track and do these types of things. I think that as, as long as they know that you are a community moving forward, we're okay. And at town meeting, that's why I said, we not, we should not, we should work hard to take, to look for projects, and to take projects that are what's best for the community, and not just take a project because we think it's going to solve a short-term problem. Because it is short-term. Things are changing all the time. And, you know, with some changes potentially, you know, there's always elections and different folks coming in, and folks having different opinions on this subject. It's always subject to change.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
No, that's a very, she's very positive, which is very important. I was kind of a little, you know, not so positive guy, which is not my nature. But those are good points. We are very active, and we are a community that the state looks to, that are doing our part significantly. Our trust is, for a small community like this, is very active in creating affordable housing, which is model in that regard. And we are doing our part. We're not saying we're not doing our part, so.
Yeah, and I think to your point, Sue, it's about ensuring what's best for our town, for our community, right, so.
Great, thank you.
Was that the last slide?
Nope, there's one more.
One more.
I think we kind of
Covered that.
Yeah, kind of covered that all, right? Yeah, we did. So is there any other? Nope. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Happy to.
And thank you for your efforts, and thank you for your teamwork. It's a benefit to our community.
Sue wouldn't mind, because we have the zoning next, right? I think it'd be good for her to sit right there.
Okay.
But don't move. Because she'll be involved with the next topic in a way. So I just want to update the board in terms of, looking at the, you know, town center zoning. The planning board had hired M E P C to look at the town center zoning in terms of its feasibility to be able to produce some commercial development, as well as mixed use, the mixed-use side of residential. What the planning board is going to be doing over the next few months is to put, what was a recommendation to look at, the town center zoning, which includes the inclusionary bylaw, that's why I want to speak to Sue being here, is to have a series of zoning recommendations for the fall town meeting. Just quick, the conclusion from the analysis was, not one particular thing, as you can imagine, makes a project successful or unsuccessful. But when you start to layer them, that's when it becomes more challenging. And the two findings coming out of that, one is the amount of inclusionary that we're requiring when it's a mixed-use development, and then how much commercial. So I'll be working with the planning board and the trust in terms of to come back with some zoning recommendations for the fall. So I just wanted to, that's here, I think it's important to talk about. I know the trust has been, we've been working together on this particular topic. So it's kind of a brief, brief update, but there.
But a good heads up for the community that there are more changes coming, because I think, similar to the safe harbor, people think it's done. They think with the zoning that it's done, so that that's a work in progress, is a good opportunity to let folks know.
Yeah, and, you know, I know we only did some zoning changes in twenty-one. But I will tell you that, as you probably all know, living your lives, the pandemic has dramatically changed so many factors of the commercial world, which, again, is affecting this. So that's, you know, there's So we'll be coming back, I'll be coming back, and we'll keep you posted. But the objective is to work on some bylaws over the summer, and have something ready for the fall town meeting.
Excellent.
Can you define the Norfolk Town Center, like the area specifically around where, what we're talking about?
Don't have a map to go to. But generally, so I think of Boardman Street to the, towards Franklin, I guess. So Boardman Street on both sides, right up just short of the nursery. And then go down to Boyd's Crossing.
Okay.
And they'll form a town hall. And then right here in the center between Liberty. And then a small little portion of Union Street over here, just goes to the house that's behind eighteen Union. There, and then going up the hill, Meeting House is part of Town Center. So both sides of the street. And then going towards Rockwood Road, The Village actually is, was in the Town Center zoning district, but to that extent there.
Okay. So it, does it include the open space that's out here?
It does, yeah. So everything here on
Open space.
Not open space, but, you know
No, I know.
Green space, whatever we want to call it.
So it includes all that too, yes. It does include that as well, so.
Okay. Great. I think residents will be happy to hear that you're, that we're making progress, that we're moving things along. I know it's still a long process, but just the fact that it's, you know, being talked about.
It's hard. It takes a long time for progress. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago with some communities down the Cape that are bringing sewer to their communities, right? And some folks are really excited because they have old septic systems, and they're thinking, it'll be far less expensive for me to connect to sewer. And they said, from beginning to end, it's a forty-year project.
Wow.
So when you think about, you know, the undertakings of something like that, it's a long, long time.
So you have to be a newborn before you get septic in you.
Not our age.
Yeah. Well, some of the things, some of the things we're talking about today, we're talking about the nineteen ninety-two master plan, so. To your point.
Long time.
Takes time, but.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening.
You too. Number twelve, Justin.
I'm wondering, and I apologize, we're going to have a few items that we have DPW for, and we have two high school seniors here who are going to give a presentation right after this. I wonder if you want to hear from them first?
Sure. They waited so patiently. That would be amazing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. Just to give a quick introduction here, a couple of months ago, I was approached by these two students, one from Franklin and one from Norfolk Aggie. Looking with a couple of different things in mind, one was looking for a co-op opportunity, and one was looking for a senior project. We came, we talked about a few things, but settled on a townwide public shade tree inventory. At which time, we sat down and essentially formulated a mechanism to get the work done, how we were going to do it, but it really fell on them. Very proud of the work that they've done, and I'm going to turn it over to them now to introduce themselves and to explain exactly what the last two months have been like.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Evan.
And I'm Rosemary.
So, yeah, we did tree inventory and risk assessments on the town's public shade trees. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So we're going to cover our introduction, what the purpose of these assessments were, how we did this, what our findings were, some example photos of what we found, the community impact that this has, and then our personal recommendations.
Like I said, I'm Rosemary Gullmanville. I reside in Upton, and I just graduated Norfolk Aggie on Thursday, and my major was urban forestry. The reason of doing this, like Blair said, I did my senior co-op as here, instead of doing it as like, at a tree company, because I wanted to see what it was like working for a town rather than private company. I attended, oh, I'm, sorry, I'm planning I'm attending Paul Smith College in New York to study disaster management, relief, and forestry operations in the fall.
Congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you.
It's very exciting.
I'm Evan Bishop. I live in Franklin. I just graduated from Franklin High School on Friday. And I'm doing this, I did this project as my senior project, which was just a seventy-hour internship. So instead of being in the classroom for the last quarter of high school, I was just out doing like, real-world things. So I was working with Blair. And my future plans are to go to Westfield State University and study criminal justice.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next slide. Oh, I didn't realize it was up, sorry. The goal of the project was to get an accurate inventory of town shade trees and evaluate them for tree species, risk, and size. The evaluations were done in multiple parks, cemeteries, schools, and public buildings. Next slide.
So for the methodology, for each tree that we evaluated, we filled out a risk assessment form. We started by identifying the tree species and getting the height and diameter of the tree. And then we would look at different targets that the tree could impact if it were to fail. And we look at the three main parts of the tree, which are the crown and branches, the trunk, and then the roots and the root collar. And we look for any different risk factors, like cracks, diseases, insect damage, lightning damage, and many other things that we look at. And then we basically just put it all together on the back to get the risk assessment rating, which will either be low, moderate, high, or imminent. And if the tree's risk assessment is imminent, then it's something that should be addressed pretty much immediately. Kind of next slide, please. And then the tools we used, I used a tandem height gauge and a measuring wheel to get the height of the tree. So I'll just hold the tandem height gauge, get the bubble centered up, and make sure it's aligned with the top of the tree. And I'll either move forward or backwards to get this lined up properly. And then I'll just measure down to the ground and measure to the tree, and that's the height of the tree. Next slide, please. And then if there were any trees that we felt needed any further evaluation, we used a resistograph, which is the machine you can see in the picture, which uses a small but very long drill bit to read the wood's density. And it does this by printing out a graph that if it stays straight throughout, it will mean that the tree's healthy and that the drill read that there was wood inside of the tree. But if the graph has dips in it or gaps, then it could mean that the tree's rotting or decaying.
And this doesn't do any damage on the tree, so it's a healthier way to evaluate a tree rather than putting an actual drill in the tree. So over the past seven weeks, we evaluated over a total of four hundred and thirty-three trees in Norfolk. We've completed, we've come to the conclusion that the trees in Norfolk are overall healthy, and it has become clear that the residents have a strong passion for the environment they live in. And that's an example of the tags that we've put on the trees. So if, yeah.
So all four hundred and thirty-three trees are tagged?
Yes.
That's amazing.
It's a lot of trees. It's great.
Here are just some photos that we had. The one on the far left is of the tags, like she said. And we used galvanized steel nails, which don't cause any damage to the trees, so it was okay putting those into the trees. And then if there were any trees that were too small to put the nails in, we would just use wire. The second picture in the middle is an example of lightning damage. That tree was struck by lightning, but you can see that it's scabbing over, so the tree's still going to remain healthy and continue to be healthy, even though it was struck by lightning. And then on the far right is another example of a healthy tree, which has a co-dominant crown, which means that it splits kind of at the top. As you can see, it splits out, and they're kind of fighting for the leadership position of the tree. Next slide, please. So by taking on this project, we now understand the health and welfare of the town's public shade trees. All, any trees that we assessed as imminent, we wrapped with red cautionary tape, and they are in the process of being removed right now. And this is going to help save money for the town, because it's much more convenient to just have this documented and on record. And if anybody is to call the Norfolk DPW with any concerns about any of the town's public shade trees, then it's just much easier to have these public records. And then this reduces any risks to public safety that any trees could potentially cause, and has also given us the opportunity to learn and help make your town a more beautiful place.
We have some recommendations for the town. We recommend that you create a maintenance plan for the trees, especially the trees that are like, along the road. So like, you don't have a higher risk, because obviously, there's people walking, there's cars, and you just don't want to avoid. All trees have risk, but you just want to have, reduce the risk of trees falling on people or cars or via anything. And then root color expectations on trees that are buried too deep. Monitor high and moderate-risk trees, and do yearly pruning on trees that need it, and do evaluations on trees yearly like we did. Next slide, please.
We just want to give a big thank you to you guys for being here, and then also to Blair for just giving us this opportunity. I've learned so much. I didn't really know too much about like, working with the town and the town environment before this. But I feel like I've learned a lot, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity.
I also just want to say thank you guys so much for giving us this opportunity to present to you tonight, and thank you to Blair for this amazing opportunity. It's made me able to showcase my skill and grow my knowledge more. And this experience has strengthened my passion for the outdoors, and it will give me, it will greatly benefit me in the future, whether that's working for the public, in the public eye, or running my own private business. Thank you. Next slide.
And I would just like to add that, you know, when this, when this was conceived a couple of months ago, it was conceived with the fact that they, that they do the work and that they present to the board. Because I thought, you know, they would have just graduated from high school. It's a great send-off, and it would really instill a passion to do this work and to get it done. And they've been out on the coldest of days. We had some, some really, really cold days early in the project, and it was raining and pouring, and they never faltered. So I, definitely my hat's off to both of them. They never, they never missed a beat the entire way. So thank you to both of you, and I really appreciate it. And on behalf of the town of Norfolk, this is something that, and we have all these catalogs, so there's four hundred and thirty-three reports now. If somebody calls me about a particular tree on Town Hill, they can literally look at the tag on the number, the number on the tag, and call me and say, tree number one twenty-two, I think, as an issue. And then I can immediately know where to go find it.
That's amazing.
What it looks like, what it did a year ago. If a year from now, a tree starts to die, I can look back on that historical record and say, well, a year ago, it was okay. What's happened? What's changed? Or, you know, along those lines. So it really does, and from a liability standpoint, you know, heaven forbid, something happened, you know, happened where a tree falls, or, you know, hits a car or injures somebody. I can look back on that record and say that it was assessed at, you know, the state in time, so.
That's great. Amazing work.
Yes, I'm very thankful.
Is this the first year that you've done this program?
No, actually, this is, this is the second year. The last, the last project we did was a cemetery assessment. We had a student that did all of the gravestones in Norfolk Cemetery. in Norfolk Cemetery. And, uh, went through the history of all the gravestones and cataloged them all.
I remember. In an app.
Yes, he put, he all put it down, uh, so it was on an app. And, uh, so trying to think outside the box with some of these projects.
That's awesome. So I have questions. So what made you be inspired to, um, look at trees? Like, that's an unusual topic. So what led you to this place?
Well, like I said, I went to, I go to Norfolk Gaggy, well, I just graduated from Norfolk Gaggy, but I originally went there for animal science. I decided it was too much like academic-based, so I was like, just, is, had found a passion to be outside, and I loved outside. And I just wanted to be outside, and that's what I found my career, and, and that's what I plan to do in my future, and I just think it's an amazing opportunity.
Well, and a real asset for our community, and I'm interested in your story, too.
So for me, I guess it was kind of just about being like in the public doing the internship. Uh, I wanted to be like out of the classroom, kinda just like experiencing what it was like to be a town worker. Um, and then being outside was another thing. I enjoyed being outside for a lot of this. But yeah.
Awesome.
So you love the trees so much, you're gonna go into law enforcement?
That's the plan.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, the town of Norfolk thanks you for your work. Um, we're really grateful and, um, very proud of these young people.
Yeah, so we're glad to hear that our trees are healthy overall in Norfolk. That's good. We love to hear that.
At least the ones on town property, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nina, just before they go, I've seen Evan and Rosemary quite a few times, and I just wanna chime and say I'm very proud of you guys. I really appreciate you all, um, giving your time to the community. The work that you do is important to us. I wanna commend Blair. This is our second run of this program. I've always really believed in co-op programs and getting the next generation of leaders interested in municipal government. So I wanna commend Blair, but I also wanna commend you guys. Really appreciate you, and it's been an honor to get to know you. I'm proud of you and the work that you've done. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you. Congratulations. That's the fun part about being on the board.
We should've had them go first.
We should've had them go first. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. It won't hurt our feelings.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Alright, so now we're going to 12.
12, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for that excellent suggestion.
No problem. Um, just before we toss it here, you know, in the board's packet, you have sort of a memo that outlines a couple ideas what we have regarding the assistant, um, DPW director position. I'm gonna let Blair speak to this, you know. Uh, these positions, as they've become vacant, you know, I know the board intends to look at the budget holistically, and we take, whenever there's vacancies, we take a look at each position and see, "Hey, is there an opportunity to relook at things, do things differently?" We took a look at the assistant director position that became vacant when Barry left us, and Blair has, uh, uh, um, some ideas for you all, and we wanted to, you know, present it to you. So I'm gonna toss it to Blair, and he'll talk to you a little bit about that position.
Alright, well, thank you once again. Um, so I, having the opportunity here to look at this, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm in my sixth year here with the Department of Public Works in the town of Norfolk. Uh, Barry was here a year before I got here. Um, and then, uh, when I was promoted to director, uh, Barry and I at the time, uh, just to give you kind of a high-level overview, uh, Barry and I had just, had collectively decided with the town administrator at the time to try to manage the DPW with two people. We thought, uh, you know, that it was worth trying to see how it would go. Um, we did that, and while we were able to keep the lights on and, and to keep everything from imploding, uh, the demand outside of that continued to grow, and we found that we couldn't keep up. With, you know, there's so many facets to this, you know, and Barry and I would often speak that, you know, Norfolk is a small town unless you're sitting in Boston. It's inside of the 495 Beltway, and, you know, we have the same permitting requirements, the same administrative, uh, requirements as, you know, bigger towns that are much closer to Boston. You know, when it comes to stormwater, it comes to, uh, things with the EPA and, uh, and DEP, all of those things take a considerable amount of time. Um, on any given day this morning, when I came in, I had 26 emails, uh, four phone calls, accidents over the weekend. Um, and it's, and this isn't really even a terrible time of the year. So it, it just, uh, for the past few weeks, Todd and I have been trying to nail down and essentially, again, keep the lights on, um, with dealing with operations. You know, a lot of the day, over the past couple of weeks, we are in the middle of paving, which, you know, somebody has to be there to oversee that. So between the two of us, we haven't spent much time in the office, and I'm not sure that I got to the 26 emails I had this morning when I got there. You know, residents certainly have become used to a certain level of service, uh, and we certainly do our best to, to try to cover that. That being said, I also understand the financial impact of where we are. So I wanted to really holistically take a look at the duties and responsibilities that, uh, the management team at the DPW has, and to see if there was a better way to do it. I mean, I have six years of doing this under my belt. Um, obviously, I am very entrenched in knowing what Barry's responsibilities were, um, and, and what Todd's responsibilities are from an operational perspective. So, uh, in your packet, I, I laid out, um, a couple of different slides, but for all intents and purposes, uh, the first one was a divisional slide showing, you know, the day-to-day operational piece of, you know, the employees that we have. Uh, we have a few frozen positions, but for all intents and purposes, all of the different divisions and the people that work in those divisions. And at 7 o'clock every morning, we have a meeting. Uh, we, we meet with all of the employees that are there on any given day, and they get marching orders, and off they go in sometimes 100 different directions. So with that, the next slide was the organizational duties. And that one really kind of gets into the meat and potatoes of all of the different items on any given day that have to be, uh, that have to be addressed. Some of them are seasonal, some of them aren't. Um, but you can see from the open position, those are things currently that Todd and I are trying to divvy up. And there's a lot of those that are clerical. You know, a lot of stormwater compliance, planning and oversight, you know, when, when these projects, uh, like paving is a great example of that, uh, it's not as easy as picking up the phone and having a contractor come out and repave your road. The roads have to be mapped out. Uh, the Chapter 90, um, paperwork has to be put in with the state. They wanna know, uh, how many feet wide, where your berm is, what you need, how many tons of asphalt. Uh, they only give you a 10% overage, um, so your numbers have to be pretty spot-on. Certainly nothing, nothing beyond my capabilities, and I have done it for what we are currently doing now with the four roads we have. It's more of a time constraint than it is, uh, from actually getting it done. So, in my opinion, the thought here would be to, rather than have an assistant director, would be to have an operational superintendent, which, uh, that person is on-call, much like myself, 24/7, 365. Uh, that person is the person that would run winter operations, um, respond when there's emergencies, uh, microbursts, snowstorms, flooding, whatever the case may be. But the, the open position is really the one that, that is glaring, only because cemetery operations, believe it or not, take up a lot of time with selling plots, uh, dealing with headstone and marker companies, uh, burials themselves, uh, perpetual care. Uh, the cemetery in and of itself does take up a fair amount of time each week. Beyond that, uh, there is winter inventory management, uh, mapping, which certainly land use, uh, uh, we work with land use a lot on those types of items. Uh, when we're looking, working with the planning board and the ZBA, um, those are all interactions with, uh, boards and committees that we have, um, that rely heavily on the DPW for, uh, not just, you know, in the early phases of discussing, you know, particular developments. Uh, maybe there's, uh, gonna be a need for water infrastructure, uh, whatever the case may be, dealing with fire and hydrants and, and those types of topics. Stormwater and MS-4 compliance, there are people in the state that that is their sole job. And I don't believe that we need to, to be there, but there, we are in, uh, going on year six of our MS-4 permit, and that does take up a fair amount of time. Uh, landfill management, we are still, still dealing with our, our landfill from 1992 that's capped. Uh, but that is an annual issue that we continue to deal with from an engineering standpoint. Uh, there are, there is plenty of testing that still goes on with all of the wells surrounding the capped landfill, and, uh, that will be a, uh, a spot in town that will forever have to be managed. Uh, then we get into staffing, safety, um, you know, training and planning. Again, we go back to street acceptance. Those are, again, with the planning board and the ZBA, those are things that have to be, uh, understood and dealt with. And, uh, and then to round out again with, uh, you know, we look at infrastructure, we look at, uh, roads and bridges. We have the Seconk Street , uh, project going on right now. That's, that is something that, when we're out there working, has to be dealt with on a daily basis. You know, that's one where you wanna be, you don't necessarily have to stand there for eight hours, but you have to be out there two or three times a day to regulate what's going on, understand what's going on. Uh, you have, uh, residents that, uh, it's certainly, uh, you have interactions with on a, on a fairly constant basis. School buses, police, there's a lot that goes into that beyond just having the vendor out there. And then there's the engineering and, uh, and the management, uh, funding management side of that. So just one project alone like that can take a considerable amount of resources. With that said, um, I had, on the, the next page, I had a breakdown of what I thought was feasible based on the industry and based on the town, and with this reclassification that I have laid out here, I think that there's, uh, fairly decent savings to the town if we were to move forward with a plan such as this. It does certainly change how the Department of Public Works is managed, without a doubt, but I think this is a viable option, uh, especially where we're looking at tight budgets and, uh, and trying to save money where we can. With that, I will take any questions.
Cool. Questions?
I have a question. Would the project manager person be, um, also a supervisor?
So the project manager position, um, only on the rare occasion that if Todd or, Todd and I were not available, but that would not, uh, be a normal part of his duties.
Thank you.
So what?
His or her.
His or her. I was, I was just gonna say, that was right on the tip of my tongue.
So that position would stay vacant? You'd just hire somebody temporarily when you need somebody? What do you say?
The manager position, no, it would not be vacant. That would be a full-time position. It's open right now because it doesn't exist.
Okay, but that, that was Barry's, sort of in Barry's position?
Without the managerial piece of it, and that's, and that's the difference in the salary at the end of the day, right? It's, it's, there's no vehicle involved. There's no, uh, management, per se. Essentially, it is a project manager as opposed to being a, a director with managerial enforcement.
So you're reclassifying the assistant director position?
Correct.
To a project manager position.
And restructuring the reporting ones?
And so some of the things that are on the page that Blair is referencing here is, by this reclassification, there's some, also some ancillary benefits, right? By doing this, uh, role, we expect to have some salary savings at a minimum of around $30,000 at a minimum, because while these classifications are projected classifications, we gotta work with Kelly and ours to make sure they work, right? But also, you wouldn't be paying overtime for this role anymore. Uh, one, the classification would be lower for this position. Also, we would not have a take-home vehicle for that position, so there's a lot of ancillary savings that come along with reclassifying.
Todd's position would go substantially go up, though, right?
I, 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 there would have to be an adjustment.
$90,000 last year with over, because he gets paid time and half overtime for winters, for winter storms and construction.
Right.
So even though it goes up, it, uh, he has more responsibility than he's had in the past. And, uh, you know, he still has, will still have a vehicle, because he will have to respond. But it takes the overtime piece out of that. There is no longer an overtime piece whatsoever. So that's straight salary.
Now, did he do plowing in the past?
Yes.
Will he still be doing plowing in this role, though? Does he realize he'll be plowing for free, though?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have presented this to the board if I hadn't already discussed this with, uh...
And what would, what would, um, project managers' salary look like roughly?
Uh, I think I have that.
75, it's on the screen, 75 to 85.
And what was, uh?
75 to 85.
Okay.
Based on an average.
Barry was at, up above 123, 115.
123.
So, but Todd's position would basically go up where Barry's position was?
No, his goes up to, uh, his goes up about $8,000.
Per year. One thing that I wanna be just pretty clear about, I think this is, I think this is a good snapshot of this, is that we have to take a look at the classification, right? This is, Blair gave his recommendation.
Yep.
I have a thought Kelly would review this, because we also look at comparable positions, right? So it might not be that step. It definitely won't be a higher grade, because if you, it's, it won't be a higher class, because higher classes are different positions. But it might be a different step, et cetera. I think this gives a good ballpark that at a minimum, you're looking at $30,000 of savings at a minimum.
Plus no vehicle.
And no vehicle.
And plus no overtime, so we can budget for it.
Correct.
From a financial perspective, I think this makes sense. Um, yeah, I mean, I would, from a financial perspective, you've laid it out, we're saving roughly $30,000 by making this change, and you're going to have some additional help with all of those administrative things that you just mentioned.
Targeted help, which I think is good. I really appreciated, just so you know, I appreciated the visuals. They were really helpful for me to see the changes from one model to the other, so thank you for doing that work. That was valuable.
Uh, I noticed that you have, there's three secretaries there?
Yes.
Now, what do they do as far as paperwork and forms and all that?
That may be beyond my, uh, my, my clerical, uh, to lay it out with justice, but, uh, so Christine is the executive assistant, uh, deals with, um, payroll, uh, most of, uh, most of the permitting, um, where she has to, to keep track of, um, solid waste, the things that track that go in and out of that. Uh, Lauren deals with all of the accounts payable for all of the invoices that come through all the different divisions, uh, and she does all of the cemetery work. And then Katie is, uh, almost solely in water. She, obviously, they all answer the phone and deal with customer service, but, uh, Katie does water billing, water and sewer is mostly where she, that's where her salary comes from as well.
Okay. Water, I don't know, there's not too much sewage other than?
Right.
Yeah.
Quarterly billing and, and any issues that, that happen with that. And again, when we get, uh, so we do get bills from vendors like Whitewater. Um, so there is some tracking that has to be done with all of that. And, um, leachate is another thing that they deal with. Uh, the landfill, again, uh, we have leachate that has to be tracked and monitored, and then once a month, all of those logs have to be, uh, compiled, put together, and sent off to our engineer, and they go to DEP. So there's a, there's a fair amount of paperwork that, that we have to track with all of this. Uh, there's, there's, uh, yeah, there's a ton of reporting.
So I think for the, the way it is in my head, for the purposes of this conversation, we're really looking at those three positions at the top, not looking at the whole outline. And do we feel like a restructuring, I mean, we're just having a conversation right now, but do we feel like the restructuring is something valuable to consider? And I guess, I feel like financially, it saves us money. Um, it might be something we wanna look at as a pilot, because, um, it's hard to know on this chart if those, um, if the, the responsibilities, those loads are manageable, right? Um, so, um...
And just to confirm, the project manager will not have any direct reports, right? It's mostly just administrative?
For the most part. I mean, he will be in the field some, uh, obviously with cemetery, uh, issues and concerns, uh, meeting residents as they buy plots, that sort of thing. And he'll spend some time in the field, uh, calculating roads, uh, doing assessments for bridges and, and that, so.
But I mean, as far as managing other... But I mean, as far as managing other staff?
No, he will not be managing other staff.
He or she?
He or she.
He or she. So are we being asked to, what are we being asked to just?
We're asking for some direction and clarification, you know, obviously this position's been vacant for a few weeks, you know, I know the board is, wants to go through a budget process, that's going to take some time, right? Just like when we had the vacant assistant position, we held it open for a little bit of time, I wanted to afford the board some time to think about it. I think just based on where DPW is, the season, I don't think we can afford that much of a weight there, right? So we want to get some direction, say, hey, do you think this reclassification is the way to go? If that's the case, we can under, we can undergo that process, work with Blair and Kelly to, you know, advertise and see if, you know, one, we can hire someone there. So we want direction if you think the reclassification is the way to go.
I think I'd like to hold off and do a little more research into it, you know, the $30,000 savings is good, but it's, I don't know, if we're into the snow plowing season in the middle, I'd say that's more of a crunch time when we've got to plow the roads and get them all sanded and everything. Right now, I know it's grass cutting season and all that, but I don't know, I'd like to do a little more research and hold off on the decision of just saying, go ahead and hire the person.
Uh, go ahead.
There's discussion.
I was just gonna ask, so have we decided that we were going to back Phil's position anyway?
No.
The Barry position, the assistant director position? We haven't.
So just context there too, in the budget, you have budgeted Barry's salary in that position. Obviously, he became vacant, so my approach and Blair's approach is, whenever there become vacancies, we take a look to evaluate positions. In the budgets, it's budgeted to have Barry's position funded. We're just saying, take time, let the board have a say and take a look at this and see if you want to proceed in that way, you want to hold off, do you want to reclassify? And I think, you know, Blair gave his reasoning on why he thinks this is important, and now it's you guys' opportunity to chime in.
And just to add one other little piece to this, the reason that I, that I really wanted to put this in front of the board was that we're, you know, knocking on mid-June here, by the time this were to get straightened out, you were probably after the Fourth of July, by the time you had it posted, you had interviews, you're probably, you know, then if you were to actually hire somebody, you're, you know, three weeks to a month before they would come in the door. You know, for all intents and purposes, this plays out mid-August at the earliest, if not into Labor Day. And so, you know, the construction window to get things done here and to, and to not have a large window to play catch-up is short. You know, this, you know, these, a lot of these other items that are in, that under the project manager, you know, description are things that, you know, we're going to be able to, essentially me, because Todd's going to be out in the field, so as I continue to chase all of those points, there aren't enough hours in the, you know, in the, in the week to do all of that. So those are, there's a lot of things that are going to fall through the cracks there over the next three months, and, you know, as we play catch-up, you know, the agencies that we deal with aren't very sympathetic to things falling through the cracks, there's a lot of things that have to be done and they have deadlines, and short of working 80-hour weeks, there's a lot there, so I just, so we don't get to Labor Day.
So if you have a recommendation that we try to fill, that we try to backfill, not backfill the assistant director, but fill this position as soon as possible based on the workload that you have.
And then Justin, may I ask you, what is your recommendation?
Yeah, my recommendation is, this makes sense. I think one of, one of the things that we've had a lot of pressure over with, even when we've held the labor positions vacant, we've had a lot of demand from the community, this is a busy period, you know, I kept the assistant town administrator vacant position months because I thought we could handle it. It was difficult, but I thought we could handle it. I, I, I think you not filling this position in DPW is gonna have, it's, it's gonna be difficult, and I, I agree with Blair that I think it makes sense to look at the revamped version of it. Not the, not the model was before, but if I were to do it, that's what I would do.
But it's gonna be difficult, if we do fill it, the budget is gonna be difficult too. You say it's funded, it's funded, but we're at a 1.4 million deficit, we're using out of free cash.
1.1 million dollar deficit, yep.
Well, with the prison mitigation money that we're not getting, that's, that's another 250,000 that is unanticipated, no? That's gonna?
Yeah, but there's also, I mean, we generally have free cash that comes through, and we have the free cash already for the budget that we've approved, so yes, it's gonna have ramifications on your budget for the next fiscal year. And so then you have to take a look at your free cash.
By the next fiscal year, you mean fiscal year 2026?
Correct, yes. Twenty-seven, excuse me, fiscal year 27.
The position was budgeted in the FY '26 budget and approved by town.
Correct.
At the town meeting that we just had, so if we don't fill it, then essentially we're holding a position open that the town approved, correct?
Well, they, well, they don't really approve every position, they approve the overall budget.
Right, but it's in the budget, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
So here's what I think, I'm just gonna put my opinion out there and we can talk about it, but I think that we have a proposal before us of thinking creatively about how we could save the town some money and also restructure the organization of the DPW. And I, so I think that's exciting and interesting to me. We also have a situation before us where we are looking at a looming deficit to us that is, is potentially problematic. I think, well, it's definitely problematic, there's no potentially about it, it's problematic.
Correct.
That's a truth. I think in, in looking at the budget, I think that it's really important that we as a board create and follow a process of how we're gonna look at the, how are we gonna look at the budget broadly for each department, and how are we doing that and look at it as a process? And in that process, this will get reviewed, so this isn't, we're not.
Approving it tonight.
We're not, well, I think we are not getting married to this model this evening forever and all time.
Right.
We're saying, we have an opening that needs to be filled right away to get the job done, that people expect to get done. I don't know, you're new, but I get, this wasn't, we did, this wasn't done, and I say, listen, we're people short, like, we have unfilled positions, we can't have the same level of service that you're used to with unfilled positions, this exacerbates that. And it is already funded in the budget, so this is no additional cost to the town to do this, in fact, it's an additional savings of 30. But to your point, which is real, like, we need to look at this stuff.
Yep.
And so I think for our short-term needs, we're imagining something different, it's kind of interesting, it also saves us money. My gut feeling is that we move forward with this, it has the support of our, our director and our town administrator, we may move forward with this, but then with the idea, as we look at the budget of all our departments and how are we spending our money, this is something that we, that will be the time where we push up our sleeves and say, where are there opportunities for savings inside this budget? Or let the town know that this is what a reduced budget, if we have to go with a reduced budget, this is the, the impact for our town at DPW. And then we'll say, this is our impact here, this is our impact there. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, I mean, I'm doing something similar, you know, the organization that I work for, which, you know, lots of organizations are company, and companies are facing financial challenges, so I think, I think that this plan is great, and I think we should ask each department to do something similar. Show us how you can potentially produce cost savings with either restructuring your org chart, or reducing your administrative costs, whatever those things are that they can do, but I think we should lay it out to your point, and you know, for all of the departments, present it to the town and say, okay, where do you want to cut? Because it's gonna have to come from somewhere, you're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to create the same service levels that we have based on those decisions, but I would like to see one of these proposals from every department, literally.
Or, or have something similar to this, but I think we need to, we need to as a board, create a process that is thorough, but that is also supportive of our departments and the work that they're doing.
Yeah.
And so we need to create that process of how we're gonna do this work and how we're gonna unpack these budgets, and how we're going to, to let our community know the consequences of this or the consequences of that. I don't think this minute right now, we have an opening that's already funded in this upcoming budget, it's been creatively looked at in a cost-saving manner, I think, I think for me, it has my support to do it like this. Understanding that coming up soon, when we look at that process and we have promised the community that that, that process will begin soon, we're not in July yet, right? It's still June, it will begin soon, I think that at that time, we do, it will begin soon, I think that at that time, we do exactly what you're talking about, and we push up our sleeves and we say, are there opportunities here? And the answer is maybe yes or maybe no. But I think the process is super important, and, and that there's consistency in the process, and that, that we're asking the right questions, and that's gonna take time to establish that process, and, and I would like that to be, to be thoughtful.
Yes, so I, I agree with that, and I also recognize that if we don't do something here to.
I don't know, I just feel, I just feel it's a rusty, I just feel it's a rusty city. Speak, the position's what, been vacant two or three weeks now?
About three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting we make a decision right now, I'm just saying that the longer that we prolong it, it does take time to post a position, hire candidates and fill a position, that process could take three months depending upon, you know, so.
I think one other thing that you have to factor in too is, obviously I'm not gonna be here for this process, but maybe Kelly can speak to or add to it, you know, when you're hiring, you want to be transparent with the people that are coming into your community as well, right? And I think we're gonna be undergoing a budget process that may be difficult, may be difficult decisions, for a new person coming in, I think we have to be transparent with that person. You may not have the market to fill this position, maybe someone has a little trepidation on that, so you may even restructure and it may not be a filled position, just like we've had a labor position vacant for a little bit of time too. So it gives you, it gives you flexibility, you're not wedded to something entirely, right? So the board can, you know, think about, we're meeting next week, we're not asking you to think, but we wanted to put this before you, because Blair particularly, you know, really thinks this is something important for him, so you've done that process.
And it has your support.
It does, it does.
And we don't actually start incurring costs until we fill the position, so could we post it, see what's out there, then decide?
Typically, we've, we've done things like that in the past.
Or we can withdraw a position, like, just because it's posted doesn't mean we have to fill it, I've seen that happen.
We've done it in the past, I mean, I also think that, you know, you're gonna have an interim town administrator that's gonna come aboard too, right? And I think that's part of what you're gonna have a discussion with him as well too, right? And how you guys want to approach it, but we've done that in the past, based on your question, tell you.
I guess, my opinion is that we, we need to look creatively to solve the budget problem, yes, but we have hired people to manage their departments, and I don't think there is, is value to go back and research and say, and this here and this, I think that, what my worry is, I'm worried that in trying to find the savings that we're gonna undermine and under, you know, you can save all of these little things and then it, and then the whole house of cards falls apart, we need to value the professional opinion and still do the work. I'm, I don't disagree with you that the work needs to happen, but I think that the process of the work needs to afford respect and listening, and we, and we need to do listening from ideas from our community, ideas from the board, and I, and ideas from, from our department heads about are there other opportunities to do this kind of work? So I think that that needs to happen, I am 100% committed to that. I don't think, I think in this moment, we have a proposal from our department head that's supported by our town administrator, that saves the town $30,000, I think, it has my support, I don't need to think about it.
I guess my question is, are we asking for an official approval of this proposal? Because you just said, Justin, that you have to take it back and reevaluate, so.
No, I think if, if you say, we're gonna move forward with the restructuring, then that process we can undergo, that's a pretty simple process, Kelly, I wouldn't say simple process, I'll let Kelly speak to it, but she can begin that work. Now, if you say, no, we want to wait and so forth, I mean, we can still evaluate and do that work if that's something you want to do, but we also don't want to waste people's time in doing that process, right? If, if you say, we don't want to do this, then we won't do that process, if you say we want to, we can undergo that process and look at classifying that position.
I think so, I want to be respectful of the fact that Kevin has asked to do some more research, and, but I also understand the urgency of Blair's request and that we want to fill the position. So I suggest, you know, we have another meeting on the 17th, that Kevin, you do any research that you'd like to do, and then we can decide as a board if we want to move forward.
That's fine, because that's only a week, that's a week delay, so.
Hopefully that doesn't hold you up too much, does that sound like a fair proposal?
Yes, it does, I think that sounds like a fair proposal.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be back at this in a week. I'm gonna put this in my NaCo file.
So the next position that we're gonna talk about, before I talk about that, I just want to, I know for some of the staff, and I'm sure some in the community have heard, Bob Bullock, who's our building commissioner, is going to be retiring in July, and I really just want to take a quick minute just to acknowledge Bob's service to the town, he's given over 24 years, I think, to the town in various roles, I even learned when I spoke with Bob a little bit ago, he's, he was doing work in the land use department, he's been integral in the community, his phone systems, GI, just a variety of things, so I just really want to commend Bob and thank him for his service. But once again, tying that into, well, how we look at these, when there are vacancies, we look at positions. Particularly, it has been requested of us to look at making the building commissioner position a part-time position. You know, I have opinion on that, I'm gonna let Kelly just speak to it first, just to give knowledge for the board on why that might not be something that we'd be interested in doing, but I'll let Kelly speak to it first.
So, first of all, the, the building commissioner position is a state mandated position, there's a master general law, I think it might be 43, but don't hold me to that, that dictates that every town in every municipality in Massachusetts must have a building commissioner. So right now in the building department, with the exception of Bob, the building commissioner, the inspectors are all part-time. We do have a part-time local inspector, he's not interested in pursuing further certification to become a full building commissioner, which is perfectly fine, so that kind of leaves us in a, in a bit of a pickle. So in terms of making this position a part-time position versus a full-time position, having all the other inspectors be part-time really kind of puts the onus on the building commissioner to be there when the other inspectors aren't available. I know that, you know, if there is an emergency at any time of day or night, the building commissioner is called upon to determine if a building is able to be, if, if folks are able to go back into their buildings, if there's a fire, or if there's a car that goes into a building, that's, that's on the building commissioner to, to ensure the safety of that building. If you have a part-time person, they may not have that same availability. But then also, the building commissioner is the one who signs the occupancy certificates, so whether you have, if you have a part-time person, that significantly reduces the availability for them to sign those occupant, occupancy certificates, depending on what their schedule is, they, you may have several days in which they're not signing permits, which could significantly delay projects, that can have big impacts on the town. So I mean, I, with having all the other folks in that department be part-time already, or even less than part-time, I think that it, that position should be a full-time position.
I, I agree with that, especially where so many building permits are gonna be coming up with all these buildings and everything, that would have, it has to be full-time because part-time wouldn't work.
Sue or Rich, do you have any say in that? Because obviously, it impacts you, so would like to hear from you, 50/10.
Yeah, they got it.
So for me, my concern is, well, I understand how somebody may look at building permits again for this year and think, okay, we've only had three building permits pulled, and the same time last year, we had 33 building permits pulled. I think it's important that we have all of this 40B work in the pipeline. I think it's important that we have all of this 40B work in the pipeline. Um, it's a lot, you know, we have over a hundred units in the pipeline. I'm not even talking about the units with the eligibility letters between the 66 at Waits Crossing and the 44 at Lakeland Hills. Um, and, you know, it's important to understand, since Rich has been here really, he has involved all of the departments that apply to all of the pre-construction meetings. Um, if there's an affordable component, I'm involved in the meeting. Bob is virtually, or the building commissioner is virtually at every one of those meetings whenever there's discussion about a potential proposal. Um, it's, and selfishly, as the affordable housing director, um, I have to go to Bob often because sometimes our developers are not quite as meticulous as they need to be. And, you know, the inspection takes place on Wednesday, we're going to close on Monday, and they don't get their certificate because something's not done properly. Um, I have to basically go and say, listen, they're going to lose their rate, they're an affordable buyer. If I can't get them in there by Tuesday, uh, you know, they may not even qualify if their rates increased. And, and our building commissioner has always worked very closely with me on that matter. And I can't imagine, um, you know, having to do that part-time with somebody. It's, it's, it's just a difficult, you know, we have a part-time electrical inspector, we have a part-time plumbing inspector. Um, it's difficult to even get that work done as quickly as some folks in, in town believe. So I think that it's important to look at what we have in the pipeline and then potentially to look at what we have coming down the pipeline. Um, and I think that, it's just my opinion, but I, I'm not sure you'll get the same talent from a part-time person that you will from a full-time licensed building commissioner. Um, and I'll let Rich speak to his part.
Sure. So one of the things that we, we touched on a little bit earlier, we talked about growth, right? And revenue sources. And, you know, I'm on the front end, but Bob is on the front end in terms of when somebody comes, they'll want to know, hey, can I do this type of development? And I'll talk more about the commercial side of things. Um, and we will sit down and we have those meetings that Sue references, but also sometimes people come in and say, is this project feasible? And then we need to know really on the building side of things too, because that's part of the whole decision tree, like, okay, does this make sense financially? To not have that kind of resource and professional is, is going to really cost us in that way that we're going to, you know, we're going to lose out on potential opportunities. Things will probably go way slower than we have in terms of, in many cases, you know, that's going to be another, we talk about why things don't get done quickly. You will add to the list of why we're not getting things done quickly in terms of just getting from a permitting through the permitting side to the building department and then out the door and getting built. And wow, I, I, I don't, I don't, you know, it's, it's, uh.
Sounds like you've, you've all made the case.
Not going to belabor this one, but I think it's really important, just so you have this. There's a lot of communities that, there's a few communities now that are hiring for building commissioners now. And I absolutely agree with the notion that if you go part-time, the quality of candidates can be vastly different. But also something that is really important, like when we talk about budget, I understand people concerned about tough budgets in the future, so you can't be reactive to everything. You have to be strategic. The building department is one of the few departments in the town that's revenue generating department. You'll want to have someone in there good that's doing that work to help us in the future too. Um, so on this one, I actually am hoping that the select board say, you know, we want to go and hire this. Bob's leaving July 11th. He's, wants to transition to his next phase of life and I'm happy for him. We want to put that posting out there and we don't want to delay this, so.
Awesome. Um, do we need, do you want to vote or just a conversation? I support, I support the decision to have a full-time building inspector. And I also want to thank Bob for his service and his, his letter really reflects, um, the care and love he's given to the position and we're grateful for his time in our town.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement.
Very good. We're good. We have our marching orders there, so that's good.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was getting kind of nervous, I'll be honest with you.
Thank you for coming up, that's why we stayed. Thank you. Awesome, so I'll go to the next one, Kingsbury Pond.
Yes.
Yes. So Kingsbury Pond, um, I mentioned last time. Um, I'm just going to summarize for the, for the copious number of people that are on there. But Kingsbury Pond, um, has been dropping in the water level. Um, we went to, there was a lot of concern from residents that the Franklin has a well on the far side of Kingsbury Pond on Franklin property, um, and that their well is excessively drawing and causing the pot- pond to drop. Um, Justin and I met with the town administrator and some other folks, um, in Franklin and, um, they're taking the matter very seriously. They do a ton of water conservation. They actually were able to show that even though their population has grown, the amount of water that they're using as a community is dropping, which is very impressive in, um, considering the growth. And so they've taken a lot of, um, conservation steps. And so, um, there, there, and the amount of water that they've taken from the well for the last 20-plus years has not, there's been no significant change. So it's not like all of a sudden they're taking out more gallons per second than they used to. Um, I think that for me, what I was, because I still want to do next steps for our community and I think what I would like to do, one of the things that came clear in our conversation is the Franklin well definitely affects the water level of Kingsbury Pond. That's a truth. Um, but we also have local wells that affect the water level of Kingsbury Pond as well. And so I think this is a shared problem. And what I would love to, um, talk about with the board or suggest that we do as a board is, um, create a list of, of wells that affect the level of, um, Kingsbury Pond and I'll be happy to work with and talk to Franklin specifically about the conservation efforts they're making. So we could send a letter to those people saying, um, you know, FYI, your well affects the level. These are things that Franklin is doing. None of it can we enforce and I understand because it's a private well and so I am not delusional that. But if we say Franklin's only watering on Wednesdays, Franklin is doing this, Franklin is doing this, Franklin is doing this, and we would like to encourage you to do those things in a shared passion for the water level of Kingsbury Pond, I think that's a nice next step. I don't know where the board is at with that, but.
I mean, it sounds like a reasonable suggestion and, and thing that we should do. I guess my question to Blair would be, given what you just told us about resources, who's going to do that work? How much wo- work would it take to do that? And is that something that we could feasibly do right now?
So just to kind of reverse engineer our problems. So we're looking for everybody who essentially is not on town water.
I don't know. I thi- I, I think that we got a map from Franklin.
I think what they're, so they're looking for people who are on the well that are drawing from that aquifer, I think, but the private well people.
Not every, not every private well, but the private wells that could potentially affect Kingsbury Pond. And I have a map that Franklin gave us, I can share with you. And he said it wasn't exact, but, um.
So the, the nearest well to Kingsbury Pond would be the Gold Street well that we have that we're actively using?
I'm talking about private, private, private wells. So let's say I.
People that aren't on town water.
Right, I live, let's, I live, it could be my well, I live a half a mile up the road. And so does my well go in that aquifer? And just so that I'm aware, not that there's anything enforceable because it's my private well, but if I'm aware that my well impacts the water level of Kingsbury Pond, I think there's value in sharing that information and saying Franklin is aware of that too. These are the steps that they're taking in their community. Um, I think that that's a good next step and I think it shows a partnership with Franklin and there are possibilities, um, down the road that they could reduce because they're doing some, you're going to be surprised by PFAS, um, mitigation efforts that could, um, their increased water treatment has allowed them to be more efficient in how they're using their water. Um, and so, um, anyway, that's what I thought was a.
This would be a great project for a project manager. Because essentially, we don't have a list of people that aren't on town water, right? So you would essentially have to go back and look at everybody in the area that you're looking for and take all of the people that are on town water and then essentially addition by subtraction, right? So then look at the people that aren't on town water and figure out whether or not those buildings are actually occupied. And then probably either reach out either to.
So that's a big ask.
Right, there's some time involved just to try to come up with that data. And then, you know, whatever avenue you take, whether it's a mailer, however you address public outreach at that point. But it is, it would be timely because that data, the water department is, is, records users, not non-users.
Right. Do you think there's value in reaching out to everybody? And just saying, or is it, is, maybe it's, the idea is an idealistic notion that isn't really practical?
I think it's, I, I think for the cost of doing that and you get so little in return, I don't think it's worth myself. Maybe put it out in the local paper or something, or a couple of papers.
Or a Kingsbury Pond update on the, um, website.
Well, there is a Save Kingsbury Pond group, so we could probably ask those people to try to get the buy-in from those that might be.
So to, in terms of a realistic ask, could I ask you to, to let me know specifically what measures Franklin has taken?
Sure.
In a way, like a bullet to list kind of thing that I could then share? And I'll take point, I'm reaching out to, um, that group and, and, um, sharing that information with that group. And then I'll share it with, um, maybe we could put something, an update, a news blast on our, um, website.
And, and just to add to that, um, you know, we, as part of, as part of our annual permit to draw water from DEP, there are water conservation measures in there. Um, no filling of swimming pools, hockey rinks outside lawn, lawn watering. Um, there are quite a few number of people in town that have private wells just for irrigation.
Like me.
So, so those are, those are, you know, those are people that you would want to reach out to specifically to try to, you know, if, if that's the concern there, but.
And so, and I have a private well for all of our water, like that's our, our only source of water. And I think there's value of saying, water's a limited resource, the town is taking these steps, we know that, uh, private wells are not, we're not trying to, um, we're not, we're not trying to get in your business, but we thought you'd want to know. Like this is, these, when it says water con- conservation, it's all the same aquifer. I think there's value in enlisting, um.
And again, that falls into our MS for stormwater permit. Like there are pieces of that water conservation that go into the stormwater permit because it's recharging the system, right? So we do a lot of outreach as part of, as part of that process as well. So all those mechanisms are, are there with some work and, uh, so I can, I'll reach out to Franklin this week.
Thank you. And then I'll do a draft and bring it back to the board.
Pull some information together.
Does that sound good? And then we can do something generically instead of target, in a targeted way.
Yeah, I probably have some things that, you know, we could just modify that we wouldn't have to start from scratch.
Okay.
That's simple enough. I'll reach out to Franklin this week and, uh, try to get back to you by weekend.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, just one last adjustment in the schedule, because you have Blair, I know, uh.
Let's go.
We want to talk about the town vehicle policy.
Yes.
And just, just discuss that a little bit. Um, one, we've had a question regarding, you know, GPS, if we can provide GPS in vehicles, et cetera. So Blair has some information regarding that. Um, while he's pulling that, currently we have, um, language in our police contract to allow the town to do GPS of vehicles. Um, you know, obviously for non-union staff that don't have, uh, or non-union staff who have vehicles, you can implement the automobile policy, so we can talk about that. Um, but, you know, there's DPW, uh, groups that have vehicles, you would have to do collective bargaining for that, so we can't unilaterally do that, so just some information there. But in terms of some information about costs of GPS and then ask the board, you know, what they want to see regarding, you know, policy, we can talk about that.
Okay, I'm going to start with Kevin because the initial, um, question came from Kevin, so I'm going to let you start and then let you take it from there.
Yeah, well, I had mentioned GPS as a while back and that, that was sort of before the budget, we had such a tight crunch and all that, so I wouldn't real, I wouldn't actually say now is a good time to spend money on GPSs for vehicles when we're in such a financial crisis and all that. But as far as vehicles policies, I know it is in the policy that Justin will, or maybe Kelly with assistant town administrator is going to have to reach out. All the town vehicles other than detective vehicles or unlocked police vehicles have to be letted. And right now there are some that are unledded and all that. As far as take-home vehicles, I, I feel that the only take-home vehicle should be somebody that's on call.
So I think then we need a vehicle policy, so that can be a, uh, something that we could think about.
Well, there's one about the lettering, I don't know about the other.
But I think, I think it, it bears looking at, it's like, what is our policy for vehicle use or for idling or for lettering or for GPS? And, and so I think that would be a good goal for the, for the select board to say, we want to, uh, update our vehicle use or our vehicle policy.
Right. I know when some, some of the stuff that we already have in the policy, they're just going to sort of be instructed to people. Maybe they don't know that the vehicles need to be letted.
Justin, can you circulate the most recent?
Yeah, I was just going to say that. I pulled this, this is in our policies handbook, it's in the select board policy handbook. The last time the automobile policy was looked at was in, uh, 2015. So what I would probably suggest, so it's a 10-year-old policy.
Right.
Um, what I suggest is, you know, one of the things that we've been looking at is select policies, updating them for the board, because now is the time to look at them. Um, you know, Kelly's da- uh, started a process, I think your next town administrator needs to do that process too. So what I would do is I'll circulate the automobile policy to the, the select board and I think taking a look at it, um, and seeing, you know, what potentially some changes you want to see, because there, for example, there isn't, uh, regards to like lettering or anything regarding that. Um, there, it isn't in that policy. So I think some direction on what the board wants to do for the next person might be helpful.
And I'd love to hear from department heads, because I'd love to hear from the people, you know, what is their opinion about the policy? Do they have suggestions? So I'd like to hear from more than just us.
Yeah.
And I would suggest that if we're going to start looking at policies, then we actually look at them, you know, dedicate a section of the agenda to policy review and I would say anything older, 10 years or older, then we should probably take a look at. Right? I mean, you have to continually update, update policies, so I, I don't know how you both feel about that.
No, no, we do have to definitely.
It's boring stuff, but.
Yes, it has to be done.
It has to be done. But I'd love to hear from department heads about that, have them look at it too and say what's missing, what should come out and get some feedback, um, from department heads.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that makes sense because, you know, obviously when we look at our vehicles, obviously they're mostly, and you know, people look at police, fire, DPW, that's where a good amount of our vehicles are. But we have vehicles in the building department, we have vehicles in facilities and assessors. So, you know, and there's non-union staff there, like there's, uh, clerical, uh, staff, there's other co- collecting bargain groups. And so you have to do work that, do collective bargaining for that process too. So there's a lot of intricacies in it, so I do think it's a collaborative approach.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will think about as we build agendas, maybe one meeting a month or something good, we could also dedicate some time to policy. I think that's not terrible. And we'll start with vehicle, just to get our.
Yep.
And, um, y- you'll get some feedback from our town folks.
You still want me to go through the GPS thing or you're good?
I think you said no.
No, that, that this time it.
I mean, I can give you the email that I get back from Verizon just for, for information if it interests.
Yeah, if you just want to send forward the email to my email.
There's a, there's a copy right there.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I can forward it to you as well.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Are these duplicates?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
We'll forward it to the board too, so everybody gets it.
You got, okay, thank you.
Apologies, I didn't make enough, I guess.
It's all good.
Yeah.
It's all good.
All right, Blair, I think you're off.
Really?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, stay.
That's all, that's all?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
So the next item was your process for hiring a new town administrator. So the next item was your process for hiring new town administrators.
I would, I would move that, given the lateness of the hour, but I think our next agenda is looking, we've moved a lot of things, so let's just go ahead and do it. I'm gonna start with, we need a new town administrator. I would like to, I think the process, this is a really important position for the town, and so I would be interested in listening to Justin. Like, I think there are organizations that could support us in the process, and, but that that costs money, and I guess I'd like you to advise us a little bit.
So what I will do is, I'll, this is definitely a board decision on what direction you want to go. But in terms of information about processes and firms, I have a lot of information regarding that. If the board would make that decision, why do I high-level tell you how some communities do it? Some communities do it all internal. They have, you know, we'll use a three-member board, for example. They have maybe the chair just go through and, you know, sort of call through a list. They put an advertisement out, have HR do that, call through the list, and then the chair will make a selection of three or four candidates, and they all come before the board, right? And you have an interview process. There's a lot of communities now have been transitioning to search firms doing this work. There's a lot of firms that are doing it now. The Collins Center, UMass does it. MRI and Paradigm are firms that do it. The town Norfolk has used Paradigm in the past, they've used MRI in the past. There's also like Rick Ru White or so forth. And so, what those processes entail is, if you were to do a third-party firm, they go out and recruit candidates, they do a screening process, they'll work with whoever the designated is, it might be the chair, go through a preliminary process to screen candidates. Some require writing samples, some require panels, there's a variety of ways to do it. And then they bring finalists to the board, and you have a public process. All of them entail a public process, when you're interviewing a town administrator, especially with a three-member board, you're gonna have public interviews for your finalists. And why people tend to prefer these firms is, if you don't use a firm, or if you have executive session process to screen candidates, you're not gonna get candidates to go apply, because they don't want their information out there. Right? It's, it's a lot of, a lot of people have trepidation about putting their name as a finalist out there. A lot of these candidates potentially have jobs already, and so there's ramifications for them in some cases to go out there. So, it really is a board decision how you want to process, but there are firms that do this work, essentially.
Okay. And so then, just to share.
Hopefully that answered what you were expecting.
When we hired, when we hired Justin, we did kind of a hybrid model of that. We had a firm that got us going and, and collected, they kind of figured out what we were looking for in a candidate, and they collected, they recruited and collected names. Then I worked with HR, I happened to be chair at the time for that transition as well, and I worked with HR, and we went through all the resumes, and we, Scott and I interviewed, I don't know, 10 to 12 people, we interviewed quite a lot of people. We narrowed it down to three people, and then we brought those three people to the board, and the board interviewed them and decided on the finalists together. And so it was, it was kind of a hybrid process, and it was, it was effective. So I, I think that, I'm eager to get the best candidate that we can, and so I think even, what is the cost?
So they range. I would say the ballpark, and depending on what you do, like, let's say the full-blown thing is probably within $10,000 to $15,000 to do the background checks, to do the screening, the interviewing, and so forth, recruiting. It's probably a that range, that's kind of what they've been going for at this point.
That's actually reasonable.
It's reasonable.
I think, I guess I want the highest caliber candidate that we can get. Would it be possible for me to meet with, I guess I'm asking the board if this is okay? If I met with Kelly, and she could reach out and get some quotes for us, and then we could consider some quotes and, and go from there? Or maybe we look at the quotes and we say, this is not, we don't have the appetite for that, and then what's a different plan? I think I'd like to see what the quote says and what they're offering us.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
And I'll lean on you, Kelly, to, so I'll have a meeting with Kelly, and we'll talk about where we think we're at, and I'll let you run with it a little bit, and then bring some quotes back to the board, and then we'll take it to the next steps. Does that feel all right with everybody?
Yeah, that, that seems reasonable, and I would also ask if you can, I don't know if other towns would be willing to share, but if you could ask select board members from other towns, surrounding towns, who they've used, if they've used a third-party, if they thought they were successful, just to get like some references.
Excellent. Or who not to.
I was gonna add that too. So, a lot of communities are using these firms now, so they do give their references for all these communities. And a lot of our surrounding communities are, Rantham didn't, because they had someone internal that they knew they were gonna do. But we can do that. Also, something to consider too, as Kelly's working to help get the quotes, you can actually bring these firms in and interview them, talk to them. See if what they offer is something that you're interested to do. Tell them what you're looking for, and you can sort of interview them and even craft a package if you don't want the full.
Did Bridgewater use a firm?
They did, well, yes.
So can I ask if, just in terms of, I don't want to duplicate something, if the firm would come in and do it, I'm, I'm kind of thinking, if, if you could, because we're not allowed to talk outside of this forum, if you could reach out to Kelly and say, this is what I'm hoping the firm will do, or should, and then you could reach out individually, and then she can call our responses? Or should we, are you okay with me just running with Kelly for a little bit? And then we'll bring it back to the board to say what, what choices are. Yes, go ahead.
If you're interested in talking with a firm and getting information, it's not tying you to a decision yet. What we can do, because there's already been firms who've reached out, asking what's going on here, is what, Kelly can reach out to these firms, and you, you can arrange to get them on a board meeting, and then you guys talk to them, tell you, and say what you might be interested in.
Okay.
And then you'll determine your process, probably the Select Board Chair is like your person working with them in the screening element, to get you to the finalists.
For me, I, I would, I'm fine with you and Kelly working on screening the firms. What's most important to me is whether or not other towns have used the same service.
Yep.
Who those companies are, and whether or not they feel like the hire was a success.
Worse.
So if they're willing to talk to you, some of them might not want to share, but if they're willing, not the firms, the actual Select Board members that hired the town administrators, what their thoughts are in terms of working with those firms, I would value that input.
I would say, most of those firms, I think most of them, list the communities that have used them successfully.
I know, but that's their biased opinion. They're all gonna say, they're all gonna say, we found the best candidate. I'm more interested in what the actual towns have.
But I'm saying you can use that list to reach out to those towns.
Yeah.
Okay. So that you don't have to like, reach out blindly, like you can go in and say like. This town used MRI. Exactly, exactly.
Then the list, we can call the town and ask how long that town administrator's been there. Whether he's been there two years or 10 years. And that will tell the quality of the, right there, whether they're happy with the town administrator or not.
Yes, but a conversation, I think, would be, that's a great idea, a great idea.
It's just a second, you know, another reference point.
All right, so we'll get the ball rolling, because I think we want the ball rolling.
Yeah.
And, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is that enough?
That's good for us.
That's good for you.
We can get the ball rolling for you.
All right, excellent. The next one on our discussion conversation was about Norfolk communication. I'm gonna let you start out with that, because that was something that you had really championed, so I want to let you take point.
Sure. So this is something that I've heard from a number of residents when I was campaigning and, and even before that, that they want the town, they want us to be more, not that we're not transparent, but they want to be able to digest all the information that we, that we share, right? Just as an example, we've been meeting since six o'clock, right? So, people don't have time to sit down and watch a three-hour YouTube video of our meeting, and we're just one board, you know, we have over, I don't know, however many boards we have in town. And there's important information discussed within each of those. So, I know there was a newsletter that, you know, because of a transition is no longer happening, but I would really like to form a communications committee that consists of perhaps, you know, staff from the town, but also volunteers who want to serve, that we can talk about whether we want to appoint people, or, you know, if it's just a volunteer-based committee. But I think with all the tools and technology out there with AI and great ways to summarize information, that would be really valuable for the residents in town, who are not all on Facebook, to be able to find out about what's happening in this community. So, that's my recommendation. I assume there's an official process for establishing or chartering a committee. Not really up to speed on that yet, so I'm looking for Justin to help me out with that. But I just want to hear your thoughts on what you guys think about that.
I'd be interested in finding out some places on some of the AI services that do summarize the meetings and everything, so someone can just go, say, put in their word taxes, or something, and it will just tell you, it will go right to the meeting in that section that talks about that.
Yeah, I actually use, at work, I use a tool called Otter AI for all of my meeting minutes, and it's pretty reasonable, it's like, I don't know, $60 a month or something. That's for a single subscription, so there, it's reasonable to do. I still think we need the, the human piece, because there are certain things that AI is not gonna capture 100% accurately. There's also things that you want to be able to summarize, like you don't want to send a whole readout of a meeting, you want, maybe it's just the highlights, like we just talked about with the Kingsbury Pond. We just want that particular highlight, or, I don't know, just as an example, the conversation we just had with Blair about the reclassification. We want to be able to send that out to people, so that they know what's happening. So I do think that it would be helpful, and again, we're not the only board or committee in town, to have someone who can go talk to the committee, like the chair of each of these committees that are out there, say, what are the most important points that you want the community to know about from your three-hour meeting that you just had? Summarize that and get that out on our town website, on social media, potentially communicating with, we have that Norfolk, Rantham Town Pages that comes out once a month. We should always have a blurb in there, like this is what happened in the Norfolk, you know, community this month. So I think there are outlets of communication that we're not leveraging that we should. And then we should also think about mailers for our, you know, our elderly population that are not on email, that are not on social media, that are not gonna be watching our meetings on YouTube. So I do think it would be helpful to have a committee coming together, think about all those things, methods of communication, and how we've reached certain populations of people in town.
So, in my experience as elementary principal, communication is always an issue, and you tell, people want more communication, but then they like, stop emailing me, you're emailing me too much. And then, but they want a newsletter, but then you look at the, the hits on the newsletter, and they're not looking at the newsletter. And so, it's, I think the, I think that, I can't remember the guy's name. There's this awesome TED Talk about the, about the guy who was trying to find the perfect tomato sauce. It's really excellent. He's like trying to find, and he did all this research, and he's like a science student, whatever, and he's like, oh my God, I can't figure out the perfect tomato sauce. And then he finally had, he's a famous person, I cannot think of his name. He finally realized that there isn't a perfect tomato sauce, that you like this tomato sauce, and you like this tomato sauce, and you like this tomato sauce. And I think with communication, we need to realize that too. Somebody's gonna want to listen to it in their car, so it has to be, you know, audible. Somebody needs to have the visuals and see the chart that Blair, and somebody else needs this. So I think there's not, I'm excited about it, first of all, so I, I support it. But I think we need to think of it in a way of, that there's not one tomato sauce, and that how do we do this if you, if you click on it, you can hear it? Or here's a video of me reading it, or here's a, a video of, of whatever. And I think we have some people in town already, like John Griffin has that, what's up Norfolk? And, and Birch is doing this beautiful summary of the school committee meetings. And so I think if we gathered those folks together, and Donna, who's in our audience, knows everything. And so, we could bring some of these people together.
Melissa Mayo has already.
And Melissa, and, and Rob Garrity, they work together to do, I think there's some people in town, and if we pull from all these people that are already kind of on the edges of that, and give them fire, I think that's an exciting idea. And bring in Amanda, and, and, yes.
Yes.
So I think it's exciting. I don't know the how to create a charge.
And the reason I'm saying establish a committee is because we could hire a communications person to do all this for us, but we don't have the budget for it. So, I'm trying to just pull from the people that have already, either are already doing this, or have reached out to volunteer, or again, we can talk about appointing members once we figure out how to establish a committee.
Maybe we can put something on the town website that's advertising, promoting that we're looking for volunteers to form a communication committee.
Yes.
If anyone's interested, submit their name to the Select Board or the Town Administrator. Yep, right.
Right. What we're missing is the daily newspaper. Like we're missing the daily, what, you know, of what happened in Norfolk, and we're missing that shared, shared information. And.
There's also an opportunity to continue to partner with NCTV to do some of this.
Oh, they're amazing.
So, yes, I, we don't have the time or bandwidth to do this, so I'm, I'm suggesting that we set, set up a committee.
Nope.
I love that. I think that's awesome. And the committee could do, on a small scale, the kind of work that the master plan did in saying, what do you, how do you want to hear from us, right? Let's figure out what, how does Norfolk want to hear from, from us? And what do they want to know about, and how do they want to hear it? And then, how do we build that?
So we should figure out how we want it worded, so Amanda could put it, post it on the website, and we can go from there. And see what kind of response we get.
Yeah, we'll, we'll double back in terms of, yeah, the charter and establishing a committee the right way for you guys. We'll come back and give you that. I think you guys have talked about, I just want to chime in very briefly. I wanted, I think it's a good idea to utilize the volunteer bandwidth that we have in Norfolk to do it. Because I do bring it into context a little bit. When I first got on board, Facebook, social media, it was done by a Select Board member. And what we've tried to do, and so, I always try to take advantage of propping up the staff that does this work. You know, Amanda's talented, she helps do the website and our social media, so we took that in-house. You mentioned the newsletter. We had a talented person that could do Photoshop and do all these different things, which I say, I don't have that skill, I don't have that capability. So we've used the talent that we've had, but also as people shift and talents shift, then our capability to do that too shifts as well. So I'm glad you're gonna have a discussion, maybe look at a volunteer group, and then incorporate talent staff to see how we can assist in that process too. So I think that's a worthwhile endeavor.
There's people that are kind of doing that already, so if we just circle, circle them together, and, and.
And I'm sure there's talented people out there that would want to volunteer that we don't even know about, so.
Maybe we could put some type of ad in the Norfolk Rantham paper that gets distributed to a lot of people.
That's a good idea, because we're reaching them in more than one way.
Right.
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, and, and the other thing with the committee is, to your point, when people transition to other jobs, you still have a committee, appointed members or, you know, volunteers that want to stay on and do it. So, anyway, I'm glad that you guys are supportive and looking forward to seeing.
Yeah, communication is always very important, is it any, the, the more you can reach, the more people you can reach, the better off you are, so.
The better.
Especially with this difficult budget season we have coming up, we need to make sure we stay out in front of it.
Yes, I agree.
And not wait until town meeting, because, you know, we, we all know how that goes, so we want people to be informed ahead of time.
I agree, I agree. That sounds awesome.
Okay, great, thanks.
And now we are at.
General updates.
General updates.
I was just gonna do two quick ones. One, I know, I think the past week, I wasn't here, I was on vacation, but I think the Park Street Bridge sort of came up a little bit. I just want to provide context for people. The, the bridge, we have not received any information from the state that the bridge is opening at this time. I just verified and communicated with Blair, we have no information regarding that. As we get information, we definitely share that information on, you know, our Facebook and website. Obviously, we understand, just talk about communication, that's not the only medium out there.
The lack of communication.
Exactly. But we, we do post that, and I just want to verify, we don't have any information regarding that. The state, the last communication with them said they were gonna provide a briefing update on that. So we'll make sure we share that with you guys. And we also share that with Gilfoil, particularly the Park Street Bridge, I know people have been concerned about that.
Gilfoil's our PR people.
So no information regarding that. And then just a real quick update, the MEK merger update. So the MEK is regarding our regional dispatch. The board, for the most part, I've given general updates about us looking at opportunities to save funds, to be more economical, and doing more regional approaches. So we've been communicating with SEMREC, which sort of is the dispatch that encompasses Easton, Foxborough, Mansfield, for example. And we're looking at merging. So our MEK Board of Directors signed to IMA to explore regionalizing with them. And today I've received notification that SEMREC signed IMA to look at regionalizing as well. If it were to proceed, it would save a significant amount of funds for the town, so I just, given that, quick update.
Now, would them dispatches come to the Norfolk, or Norfolk go there, or how would that work?
Yeah, no, that's part of what, things that need to be ironed out. It would be likely that the dispatch would move to SEMREC, because they're applying for a pretty substantial capital grant to outfit it. because they're applying for a pretty substantial capital grant to outfit it. One of the most important things that I've cared about in terms of this process, in terms of representing for Norfolk, is that, well, we spent a lot of money outfitting here. We don't want to have any costs associated with our move there. So it was part of the IMA, our lease payments, everything that we get in terms of finances, we would still receive. But I've also communicated with state 911 and they're interested in moving their backup site here. So that would be great for us too. So yeah, if that answers your question. Most likely, if we were to do this, we would move to SEMRE. But there'd be no cost or effect for the town. That was always important to us.
Excellent.
And just so people are aware, pretty much every, every community voted in support of this merger. And all of our police and fire leadership is in support of this merger as well. Beyond that, there's pretty significant potential savings for the town to do this process.
I love those two words.
To get rid of our deficit enough?
Significant savings. Those are good words.
It's very, it's a decent saving. Particularly if the town took advantage of a grant that subsidized 100% of the cost of a move for like three years and then went to 50 and 25. We've been negotiating with the state to see if we can be eligible for that again. So if you get 100% of savings for X amount of years, it's a decent number. So we'll see. I won't promise that, but we're working on it.
Thank you.
Well, I want Kelly to promise because she's the one that's going to still be here next week.
That's all I have for my updates.
Do you have any updates?
I do not.
Do you have any updates?
No.
I have one small update. Governor Haley has issued an executive order about instituting age-friendly practices. And so they're going to be forming at the state level, a committee of looking into age-friendly policies and practices. I think this is something that, it's exciting to me because I think that's something that is a need for us in Norfolk. I did meet with Norfolk Senior Strong and I've had a preliminary meeting with Karen at the Senior Center. And I just want to, I'll give her, it's all wheres and whatnots. You don't want me to read it tonight. But I'll give it to Amanda to include in our notes just in case anybody wants to read it. But it's preliminary work, looking at age-friendly practices. And I think that's something that we want to be on the front end of, not on the back end. So I'll share the proclamation. You can get it on mass.gov, but I'll share it so it's in our minutes and folks can look at that. And that's my only update.
If you got an email from Maury Haley, could you request that she, we get our mitigation money emailer?
I was working really hard with Representative Vaughn and Senator Roush and it's, I didn't go to Maury Haley.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe you might.
I did reach out to, well, oftentimes, especially in terms of mitigation money, Senator Roush has been really helpful, but this year she said it just was politically and it didn't go. So that was disappointing for sure. Anyway, so I'll share this with Amanda to put in the minutes and then I will accept a motion for the warrants. Do you want to?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We accept the warrants or?
As printed in the agenda.
As printed in the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
From here.
From when? From April 1st, April 29th and May 13th, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
We need to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.